I will go ahead and call to order our city council work session on August 6th of 2024. First item of business is citizen comment. I do not have any citizen cards. Is there any citizen present that would like to speak during citizen comment? Seeing no one, I will move on to our discussion item, discussion of the proposed 2024-25 budget for the city of Longview. Mr. McPhee, city manager.
Well, good evening, Mayor and city council. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to provide an update on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2425. I'll share a few key changes that have been made since our initial discussions, and then I've asked several directors to help us address questions raised by city council during our July meeting. So our proposed budget revisions, the most significant adjustment to the proposed budget is the removal of one-time year-end expenditures. If you remember, I mentioned that there were a few items that we intended to purchase at the end of the fiscal year with remaining savings from our existing operations and maintenance, but given the recent discussions about fund balance, we've chosen to forego those purchases, which leaves anticipated savings in the general fund balance for city council use. So I'd like to move forward to the general fund overview. This is for the coming year. The revenues of 95.5 million and 95.5 million in expenditures is adjusted due to the final valuations and adjustments to that property tax revenue, which have led to a minimal change since that July discussion. The general fund budget is now 95.6 million. Also, the anticipated fund balance has increased to almost 26 million due to the avoidance of the $716,201 that are savings from our current fiscal year, end expenditures. The proposed budget still has a decrease in street funding level of service of $230,616. We've refreshed this. You can see that the funded balance displayed on this chart. Please note that as discussed previously, we are not proposing the use of fund balance. The purchase of the new fire engine at 1.4 million is not currently funded. If so desired, the city council could choose to allocate fund balance for that purchase. The next slide is the matchstick chart, again, due to actual valuations. Please note that at our current proposed property tax rate of 5619, the amount of property taxes for debt has decreased to 1586, and the amount allocated to maintenance operations has increased to 4033. Finally, we have received the calculations from the Gregg County Tax Assessor's Office. The no-new revenue rate is 54516, and you can see that the voter approval rate is 59880, and that echoes the information that we furnished to you on Monday of this week. One of the questions at this time that we discussed at our July meeting was the possibility of LeadCo assisting our annual budget. I've asked city attorney Robert Ray to if he would, and he has graciously agreed to discuss the LeadCo funding criteria at this time.
So, as I think you all have some idea, the use of LeadCo money is limited by statute. So I've, with Richard's help, have created a couple of slides here, giving you a bulleted list of the types of expenditures that you can use LeadCo money for. Most of these things are the types of things you would expect: manufacturing industrial facilities, distribution facilities, warehouses, job training, that sort of thing. However, I think the uses that may be of most interest right now in this discussion are on the next slide, yeah, that one right there. The last three uses in particular: public safety facilities, streets and traffic control facilities, parks facilities. LeadCo has contributed to these sorts of things in the past, and I think Roland will have some examples, some specific examples for you in a moment. The key thing to remember is that these three categories are limited to infrastructure, so we're talking land, buildings, improvements to land, physical improvements. So, for example, that could not be used for things like salaries or wages, or the purchase of vehicles, or something like that. That is a very quick overview, and I'm now happy to take any questions or have any further discussion about that.
Okay. Ms. Gamboa has a question.
So, Mr. McPhee, Mr. Ray, for some reason, I didn't realize we were reducing the level of maintenance into our streets. I thought we were just maintaining our level of maintenance. So would we hypothetically be able to, rather than reducing that, be able to use some of this for streets, so that we don't have to reduce? I just can't imagine reducing our streets any more than they're already at, especially with all the recent storms and stuff we've had. Our streets are eroding, so...
And my apologies if I did not make that clear in our initial, in the initial presentation. It was one of the things I highlighted. That was how we closed the gap. Certainly, we could ask for funds or consideration of maintaining that street maintenance level, whether it be from fund balance, or whether it be from request to Longview Economic Development Corporation. Those are certainly things that we can entertain.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Are you, is that good?
Yes, for now.
Anybody else have questions for Mr. Ray on this? Yes, Mr. Pirtle.
We've got park facilities on here. What do we have coming up in the budget that includes parks on this budget?
And I'm going to, I'm not prepared to answer that in particular. John, if you can mention some of the things, I know there's some scheduled maintenance, or playground improvements, or things of that nature that he has in his budget that may, if you'd speak to that director, Albertson?
So in our budget this year, we did change kind of how we operate with some of our maintenance. We have a project at Broughton where we're going to work on starting to replace the playset there that's been long needed to be replaced. We also have some, a couple of projects in CIP that we had requested this year. That was the redoing the pickleball courts at Guthrie, as well as replacing one of the bridges, the last bridge at Juliana Trail. So those were the major projects that we have.
So, money totals, what are you estimating your money totals are for these projects you're talking about?
So for Guthrie, you were looking around 130,000. That's what we estimated. Then you were looking at around 210 for the bridge on Juliana, and then Broughton, which is in our budget, is around 80,000.
Okay. Does LeadCo have anything to do with the swimming pools? I mean, that's a park. Is that an option?
Those would be things that I think would echo some of the things that they've done for us in the past, and I'm, that's what the next thing I was going to talk about is to give you guys some examples of things that LeadCo's actually done for us in the past.
Well, I understand that.
Sure.
But what I'm asking is, if we want to put a pool on South Side, which we're going to do, some of those funds can, those funds come from LeadCo?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's considered in your park, for your park budget then. What about the arboretum? Is there any, any things that are going to happen at the arboretum that's going to be, need to be funded?
The arboretum is working on some of their own projects at the moment, Children's Garden being one, but that wouldn't require any of our funding at the moment.
Well, does the, does the 180,000 or 200,000 that we produce for them every year, is that feasible to come from LeadCo?
I don't believe it is. I would defer to Mr. Ray, but I believe that $200,000 is payment to them for operating and maintaining the portions of the arboretum.
Okay. That's, Mr. McPhee is correct. The LeadCo money really can't be used for like maintenance and operations. It is for, you know, building physical improvements to the park, so the pool, for example.
Okay. What about streets? Michelle alluded to streets a minute ago. Can any of those funds be used to reconstruct streets?
I believe that street improvements can be something that they fund.
Yes, that's a, that's an approved use for, for our, for LeadCo.
And most of these costs are already in our budget, so, a lot of them are anyway.
Yes.
So, okay, that's what I wanted to know. So there's, there's not, I understand, you've told us a long time ago, we can't use these for salaries. That's fine, but there's a lot of things that need to be done in all parts of town besides salaries, you know? Maintenance is a big, big, big issue with everybody, so, anyway, okay, thank you. I'm finished.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pirtle. Do you have another question?
I had a parks question, but I'll defer it until we discuss the budget at length towards the end of the agenda.
Okay. Does anybody else have a question for Mr. Ray? Okay, I think we're prepared to move on.
Okay, so I just wanted to take a minute to talk about recent LeadCo funding initiatives. I think it's helpful to highlight the things they have done while we consider requesting things from them. As Robert noted, LeadCo's primary funding supports primary jobs and industrial investment. On the screen and within your folder, there's a list of significant projects that have been supported by LeadCo in recent years. Not included in this is the reinvestment in Eastman, what's before you, which will take, take place in the coming years and will be a source of revenue directly to the city. All told, those recent investments will yield nearly 4,000 new jobs and nearly 200 million to the city of Longview in the coming years, and that copy is, like I said, is in your folder. So that's, that's what they've done since really 2016. And from, the next thing that I want to talk about is LeadCo's also partnered with us regularly in the past to do just the type of things that city council is discussing. So on the, on before you is a list of projects that they have undertaken and done for the city over the past seven years, and that's a, that's a relatively new trend that started over the past eight or nine years, is they have done more of that. And the thing that is not reflected on this is they annually give us $300,000 to be the city's portion of the match for transit. So that concludes just, I, I thought it was helpful just to talk about what they've done and what they do do, and the, and the benefits of what that brings to the city.
Certainly, and I think they've been a good partner, so we certainly want to acknowledge that, and I appreciate that. Any questions to Mr. McPhee on this?
Um, yes, I have a question. So on the one-time things that you said that you took out of the budget, what were they?
They are in our budget document. There is a list of removed things, and I'm, I'm looking to find out where that is in the page, in the pages of our document. We can get that list to you. There was about $2 million in one-time expenditures that were removed.
It's at the back of the general fund report.
Thank you.
Very last page. What, in the new one, or the ones, because the budgets that you gave us last time showed what y'all wanted in the budget for one-time expenditures. You said that you've recently updated that?
Yes, ma'am. We removed, there were some things that weren't listed as those one-times, and they totaled 716. I can get you that information. I don't have it with me at this time.
So on this list right here, is it from this list? Because that's what's...
This is the list.
No, these are, these are still in our current proposed budget.
Okay, so I guess that's, I mean, that's the question that I have. So like, replacing the old RTUs, what are the RTUs at Broughton? It says four or five, $70,000?
You might as well sit on the front row, John. Sorry.
Oh, I think what you're referring to would be the tables, so the, the different playtables and equipment that we have in the lobby there. We're actually working to try and replace that with other funds this year, so...
Okay, so that's not, I thought that was included in the bond for Broughton. That wasn't included in that bond?
No, ma'am. There were a number of things that were, were not able to be produced within the budget of the bond. Not all of the furnitures, fixtures, and equipment was furnished as part of the bond due to the cost increases. If, 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 when council decided to move forward with the 2018 bond, there was a scope associated with all of those, and then, as we all know from being up here and having discussions about the cost increases, there was never cost increases in the bond amounts that we went out for. So staff has done an amazing job of managing to build the projects within, in the funds, but some of the things had to be supplemented in post-years.
Okay, and so on developmental service, the natural lighting increase, phase one of two, $50,000. Where y'all at on that? Like, what did y'all do in the first phase?
That is for next, that is for next years. This year, we, there's been nothing accomplished for the natural lighting in this year's budget.
So is that something that can wait?
I, yes, ma'am. It is something I recommended, because I believe that if you go to that facility and you look around that facility, the employees have no natural light except for two doors, and that affects morale, it affects productivity, and I believe that to be an important investment to do. That's why I recommended it. It's certainly something that can be cut out.
And what about the fleet flooring, $50,000?
That is for, there is, there's some slick areas and some failed areas. Dwayne, you can come up here and contact, discuss that.
Yeah, we've got some areas in that fleet floor. When it was fleetwood back in its day, that concrete floor has been damaged pretty badly. So they get on a creeper and they start trying to creep under something, and it locks up, and it's very, it's a little dangerous. And so that $50,000 is to start helping with the repair of those, yeah.
So is that, because we're, it says, I guess, it's phase two of three, so y'all have already started that project?
Yeah, we've done phase, we've done phase one already.
Oh, so, and phase two, where y'all at on that? Like, have y'all already pulled up floors? Is safety concerns?
No, that, this is, this is phase two here, so that'll be next year.
I know, that's what I'm saying. So y'all completed phase one.
Yes.
This is for phase two.
Yes, ma'am.
What I'm saying is, what's going to happen in phase two?
They'll go in there and, and actually do the same thing. They'll remove part of that flooring and put it back in.
So there's areas right now without any flooring?
No, it's not. We haven't removed anything yet. It's just, it's just damage, so that you can't roll on it. That's, that's all it is. We haven't...
They broke it up into pieces.
Phase one, we took, yeah, we took a section, replaced that flooring, and now we're looking to move to another section and replace that flooring.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. McPhee? I know you have more slides, so, yeah.
So, one of the things that I was tasked at the last meeting, you asked me to develop proposals for potential raises for employees, which were not included in the original budget. So I'd like to introduce the four plans. The, there are four plans that we've talked about. We've developed, there's a flat $1,500 per pay increase for each employee. That is option one. You can see that the graph, which we'll get Ms. Hubbard up to talk about the pay plan, but it says, really doesn't maintain the pay plan, but it does prioritize those low-wage workers. The second option is a 1% pay increase across the board, as well as a $1,250 adjustment to the base salary. That addresses both things, but doesn't do as well for the pay plan, and the cost of each of those are reflected in the first line. The third option is a 2% pay increase with a $1,000 flat adjustment that actually protects the integrity of the pay plan and accomplishes both of the things that city council had desired. And then there's a flat 3.5% increase across the board, which we don't think gives preference necessarily to the low-wage earners. It's important to note that when council considers these, these are recurring costs that are shown on the screen. We ought to also identify if the plan maintained that stability, as I just went over, and another request that was mentioned was we would like additional details or explanations on the pay plan, and at this point, I'd like to ask Bonnie Hubbard to come up and talk about the pay plan.
Hello, everyone. So just very basic understanding of the pay plan to start with. In 2007, city council, at that moment, tasked the then-city manager with moving from a merit-based pay plan, so how we performed on our evaluations, to a market-based pay plan. They also picked 19 comparison cities based off of size or scope, some similarities, and that went into effect in 2009. They also asked that we move to 95% of the pay plan, so we would always be 5% behind our market cities. And other key notes is that our ranges, our pay plan is set by ranges, so they have a numerical factor to them, and that is also set by the market. So what our other cities have that correlates to our ranges, and there are 5% between each range. And we also have within our pay plan, six-range spread between our supervisors and the subordinates to try to keep just the scope between them as far as pay goes with responsibilities and managing that. So as new positions are developed, we try to keep that integrity of the pay plan there. In 2015, council came back and looked at it again and dropped off three of the cities to these current 16, and we still utilize these 16 cities. At that time, council also determined that our sworn and certified police and fire pay plan, that they would only be compared to Tyler, so, and they still are at this time. So in preparing the raise projections for Mr. McPhee, I looked at our last pay plan, market-based pay plan that we did in 2023, and reevaluated it to our current pay plan, and we are still, on average, with all of the employees, aside from certified police and fire, we are still 90% behind market. So, and that includes also that additional 5% that council asked that we stay. So we are still, you know, 90% behind market, so essentially 10% below market, so 5% lower than when council initially asked us to be. So, any questions about the basic pay plan structure?
Oh, go ahead.
I don't have any questions about the pay plan structure, but I was listening to you saying that y'all compare things to other cities mainly like Tyler. So are y'all comparing the overtime? Because looking at the budget and seeing the overtime that we're doing right now, it's nowhere in comparison to Tyler, not even by a quarter.
So overtime is not compared. It, they look at job descriptions, kind of, in a lot of positions, a maintenance worker here to a maintenance worker at our other 16 cities. So what is their base salary, and then we move 5% below that for our market pay plan. So overtime, sometimes benefits are looked at for other surveys, but when we're looking at our pay plan, it is just their basic salary.
But when we have an employee and we're budgeting overtime for an employee that's getting $74,000 to $78,000 in overtime, and we have lower-level employees that, that equals three of their salaries, I mean, it has to be a solution to that, because we can't budget for overtime at that cost.
Right, and I think we can address that with the chief and some of our recruitment efforts we are doing. I know a lot of that has to do with vacancies they have had, and this trying to just get the personnel, required personnel on shift each day to meet our standard is where those overtime costs have come. So we have really worked on recruitment to try to get those vacancies filled to reduce that overtime cost.
Yeah, and I did notice that, but I also noticed that like it kept trending up from year to year to year to year, and then it is going down just a little bit this year, but still in comparison to other places, we're just not, and that, that is a big chunk of money. That's just given one employee.
Right. I understand, and it is something, again, that has not been compared in the past, but we can start looking at overtime of our comparison cities as well.
Yes, Mr. Conley. I'm sorry, were you done?
No, I'm done.
Okay, I just want, Ms. Hubbard, just a couple of questions. So you mentioned, right now, we're 90% in market compared to the other 16 cities, correct?
Correct.
So we, we've established 75% of our budget, or more, a little bit more, 75 to 80% salaries.
Sure.
So, understanding that that 90%, is that, you're basing that salary, how much we pay, do you also have a comparison, and you may not have it with you right now, but like the structure of cities that are similar size that have weighted, where we have, like you mentioned, we have 54 managers and directors and 55 supervisors. Has, is there, do you have any data that compares that number to other cities?
Uh, not with me, but I can obtain that data and share with you all.
And then one other question I had was, can you explain, just educate me on this, this market-based, the six steps?
Yes.
So, we hire someone, and you, because the, what I'm, the range between, the spread between the supervisor and the subordinate, okay? So if we hire someone, can you give me an example exactly how this, like, so if we hired somebody, say, at $50,000, okay? So their supervisors, you, you're putting a 5% spread, so are you saying that that, if we hired somebody at $50,000, then that, there would be, need to be a 30% increase between them and their supervisor?
So our minimum, I'll, I'll explain it my way, and hope, hopefully we connect. Our minimum, minimum wage that we have decided for the city with council approval last year is $15 an hour, so that's a range 40 in HR terms. So looking at a six-range, their supervisor would need to at least be a range 46. So, yes, we are answering the same. If a $15-an-hour employee, their annual pay is $31,000 a year, if they start at entry, then their supervisor would need to be six ranges or 30% above that.
So my question, I just, I just, I'm, is there ever a situation where we, we, we have to, if we hire someone at a competitive salary, because we're trying to compete and get really good people, of course, the best, we deserve the best, but is it, does that, does that range mean that we also give raises to the person that's hiring, the supervisors?
Um, our pay plan, the integrity of it has been maintained. We have not faced that issue. The, when we are looking at doing market pay adjustments, we do look at that, analyze that, and make sure we don't run into that conflict, and we have not.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Yes, John.
Is that 90% of the market pay, is that factoring in last year?
Yes.
Increases?
It's factoring in the market data that we had from last year, so the 2023 comparison city data with the pay adjustment we made based off of that. So we are still below the market of 2023 data.
Did it help us move up any, or is it?
It did.
How much did it, do you know how much it?
I'll get that back to you.
Okay.
So last year, employees received a minimum 5% increase, plus market if it was above that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Hubbard?
I do.
Go ahead, Ms. Pirtle.
The overtime, what department does this overtime in mostly?
I was not prepared to answer for the full overtime. I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers in front of me. I was asked to provide information specifically for the fire department.
The fire department's the one you're speaking of, yes, sir?
Yeah.
So how much was the overtime versus what we budgeted for the fire department?
I, I can answer that.
Thank you.
The, the, the actual, if I remember off the top of my head, the original budget for fire overtime was about one, 2 million for this year, and where were they're going to end the year this year is about 2.3 million. And so if you look at the budget for the proposed overtime next year, it is 1.4 about, and so that's a substantial reduction. And so that's a substantial reduction from what we're seeing this year. And part of that reason is because we're specifically targeting, and I say we, Chief Steelman's done some specific targeting of strategies to reduce that overtime budget by, and he's pulled some levers on hiring, we've done some recruiting efforts that are a little bit beyond. But yes, that is, that is because of the nature of just public safety vacancies and problems with recruitment. We have pulled our city council, and I will give you guys the credit, you guys are the ones that have approved this, the incentive pay, the health screenings, the improved equipment that we've been able, that's all part of the things, the ambulance ride pay. We have successfully addressed a lot of the vacancies and have started pulling in people from, unfortunately, surrounding cities that have helped offset that labor shortage that we had. And so when we expanded services, we obviously created a little bit more of a deficiency. But these levers that we've been pulling for about two years, they're actually starting to catch up and fill. I was looking at information today because I knew this was a topic of consideration. I think the numbers that I had last updated that I got from Ms. Hubbard showed we've got full staffing in the fire department. Now, I can't tell you how long that's going to last. We have an aging workforce. We've had a lot of people that are eligible, eligible to retire that may be leaving. But lots of these things are starting to see the impact. It's very difficult in today's market to shift that turnaround in a three-month period. But I will tell you that that's something I have been focused on and in my presentations to both, to all of you. That is something that we have been pulling levers on and encouraging different things. We've added a recruiter position, we've done a lot of things. So I think we're going to start to see that gap close, which is why the number for next year's budgeted overtime is reduced.
So what percentage of the fire department's budget? I just, just throw a number out there. Say we budget 25 million for the fire department, and we're coming in at 2.5 million in overtime. So we're looking at a 10% increase, just guesstimating numbers, I mean?
Round numbers, sure. And part of the reason that we're able to offset that increased cost, right? We've got an expansion service, we're providing service, it's, we've, we've got vacancies, so we've got to call people back on overtime. But a large portion of that, right, overtime's time and a half, the time part of it, the straight time, if we had a position filled, that would be two-thirds of that number wouldn't be overtime. So it's the premium on top of that regular pay that were actually increased costs.
Does the police department have the overtime issue?
There's a little bit different in certified, and I'm not going to be saying things correctly. JP, if I say something wrong, please hop up and correct. There are certified, there are minimum staffing levels for the fire department and the paramedics for maintaining insurance, ISO ratings, and I don't have that exact acronym in my vocabulary. But that's one main difference from that. I will tell you that, in my opinion, there are lots of things and life events that happen in the fire service. You have people that, God willing, don't, but they do ultimately get injury, have injuries. They do, they have families, there are people like all of us up here, and so they will, there is time off, and we are staffed for what we need. And I would argue that we need to work towards saving overtime and shift those back to expanded paramedics and firemen on a standard budget to where we can absorb those fluctuations of when people aren't going to be there to fulfill their duty.
Well, we've all been told Tyler has very minimal overtime. How, what's the difference between us and them?
They do not run an EMS fire base system.
I think that's it, thank you.
Okay, I think I saw Mr. Wee. Do you have a question?
It's fine, it was kind of answered with Mr. McPhee, so, thank you. I guess the basis of it was, just how many years have we been at full staff with FD? Do we know? I mean, we're at full staff now. Didn't mean for you to have to get up.
No, no, that's fine. No, we are not currently at full staff. We will be close come Monday, the 12th. We have 16 new employees that are starting. That's still going to leave us with one vacancy, but I also lost a person yesterday. So it's just that constant battle. And the person that left yesterday, making a career change, getting out of public safety, going into the technology field.
Sure.
So it's just that constant battle of trying to keep those people onboarded. And it's like I explained to Mr. McPhee earlier today, when that person walks out the door, that's a single-day event. To replace them is a two-year process. Because of the way that we pivoted and have changed our hiring practices, the 16 that we're hiring that are starting on the 12th, 10 of those are going to be full-time students for the next five months before I can even put them on a fire apparatus to count towards staffing. But that's the investment that we're having to make to get people, for the sake of the paramedic pool in the state of Texas is dried up substantially over the course of the last couple of years, really since COVID. You really saw an exodus out of public safety on the back end of the COVID pandemic. And we're still feeling some of that today.
I saw Mr. News, I'm sorry, are you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
I saw Mr. News today, then Mr. Conley, then, oh, you were pointing, okay. Then Mr. Conley, I think you're next.
Yes, I have a quick question.
Thank you.
So we're, you know, we're talking, we're budgeting 1.4 for overtime. I mean, that's expected, there's going to be a charge for overtime. The, the charge for this year, the 2 million, has that been a recent increase, like in recent years? What's been the, is it customary, you're saying your budget for 1.4, there's some expected people will be sick, there'll be things that happen with, but has there been an increase in that number in the recent years?
So, so I will tell you this, the number that we have placed in the budget with Chief Steelman's information has been what I believed should have been budgeted and hasn't been until you get the additional folks onboard and the labor. So we, we did, we did expand some services before we were fully staffed, and the things and incentives that we had done was going to take some time. So I would tell you, I'm sad I missed with 2 million last year for the overtime, but that's why the 2.3, I do think that'll come down in time. But it's, again, that renewed focus of getting those employees onboard and contributing members through that first five or six months of training to where we don't have to call back on overtime for that.
So that's kind of, you know, Mr. Wade mentioned that we're in full staff. So I would just, if you're full, if a fire department's full of staff, you anticipate a million, 1.4 in overtime?
Yes, sir, because I think to get those 16 people that he just called me out and said they don't start till the 12th, thanks for that, chief. But when you, when, when you said, when you bring those onboard, it's going to be another five to six months before they can ride on a truck and count as a firefighter on duty. So you're going to have a half a year of exposure of the, I will say, larger-than-normal overtime for that first six months of the year.
So you're basically still understaffed?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because of that disparity.
Mr. Conley, you good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I think Ms. Campbell is next.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, everyone. I actually agree with a lot of my colleagues here. I know that, I know sometimes overtime is inevitable, especially when we have shortages of some stuff. I know that we are running 80% of EMS calls, and I know there's an overlay of our EMS system, and that's putting strain on our people because we're having, you know, I know that what differentiates us from Tyler is that our firefighters are also paramedics, so I know a lot of them are fulfilling those roles. I guess what I'm concerned about is the, I understand there's going to be overtime, and those are, sometimes we're going to have to work through, but the overlying issue, and I know we're moving on to it a little later, so I'll cover it then as well in regards to apparatuses. And I know that it's difficult, you know, figuring out where we're going to put some of these things, but I know particularly for a lot of our districts, ambulance time responses are longer than anticipated. And so I know last time I asked the differences between what the need was for the fire truck and versus the ambulance apparatus, and I know that, or I hope, from talking just to various firemen and groups and such, it's come to my understanding that having that extra ambulance and putting that, and having that personnel on that ambulance would maybe alleviate some of that overtime stress because you would be training the people to have on that apparatus, and it would be dispersing the call volume between those. Can you talk to that a little bit?
I mean, I certainly think, to follow up on Mr. McPhee's comment of adding the additional staff to cover the ambulance is going to be rough for the, for the outset of that process because we're going to have to get those people trained up. That's part of what's hurting us right now is we're having to invest two years' worth of training to get those paramedics trained to be on that ambulance to function in the field. Certainly, any, anything that you add to complement the available resources in the city are going to help. I mean, when ambulances are busy, when they're spending wall time at the hospitals, because the hospitals are understaffed, and those ambulances aren't available to be running emergency calls in the street, there's a ripple effect off of every bit of that. So sure, the more ambulances you have, the closer we can get to closing some of those response times gaps, response time gaps. It's the same thing with fire apparatus. I mean, it all works, it's the system working around the city.
You just said something about the wall time, that was actually another question of mine, is what can we do with the hospitals to alleviate them not having our paramedics and firemen having so much wall time? I think that making those, all those tiny little changes over time is what's going to have the positive impact. Not only that, but, and I'm so grateful and I appreciate all our third-party EMS services that operate within our city, whether that's hospitals or third-party services like Camp County or whatever. But I think if, I think it is important to put that investment, to have those paramedics, no matter how long it takes, years to put them on there. But I think we need to get to a point where if we are saying that we are EMS-heavy, I would prefer for that to be part of our team, taking care of those EMS calls, and then obviously using those services if we need to. But those third-party services sometimes cost so much more, or having our firemen sitting there on wall time when they could be out on the field. So do you have any creative approaches to what we can do to resolve those issues?
I think wall time is an issue nationwide. It's a healthcare system problem. The hospitals are probably struggling to hire nurses. I mean, I'm married to a nurse, and I know that I used to hear that from her quite a bit. Until that situation gets fixed, I know it's something that we monitor really close. We have set rules in place that when we have two, more than two ambulances on the wall over a certain period of time, then an administrator gets involved to go up to the hospital to meet with their administration to figure out what we can do to free that ambulance up to get it back on the street. So there's, there's all kinds of checks and balances and processes like that that we try to implement. At the end of the day, it's a healthcare-wide system problem. And, you know, street-level EMS being the beginning part of that process, I think it's all, like you said, it's all, it's all interconnected in the background. I don't know how to make the hospitals hire more nurses. I mean, I don't know how to have that conversation with hospital administrators. I'm sure they're, again, they're struggling just like we are, and I've seen this change at, and I hate talking about the pandemic, I want to be so far away from that. But that's the big, that's the impact that I've seen, the lasting impact of the pandemic or some of these symptoms that we're continuing to struggle with.
I just have two more points. Thank you so much, chief. I know that ISO has been mentioned a couple times, and I know that ISO is a measurement tool for level rates, particularly for homeowners insurance on levels one through 10. And I know currently we're a two. I know that there's like a push to wanting to be a one, but what truly are the big differences from going from a two to a one? And who benefits or what businesses particularly benefit if we were to go from a two to a one?
So the standard rule of thumb is going from a two to a one for the residential homeowner, homeowner insurance policy, there's not a lot of change of any at all. The big difference of going from a two to a one specifically rests with economic development. You attract industry businesses to relocate because they have policies where they won't look at communities that have anything less than a one. I mean, that's the rule of thumb, Mr. Mansfield has spoken about that several times. So really, that's the big advantage. If you add business and industry to your tax base, then it helps foot the bill for so many of these things that we're talking about through the budget process.
And I can understand, I'm definitely a fan of that, and maybe we could get a list of what type of businesses those are. I know even with a level two, we've been able to attract some awesome, great businesses. And so I guess the reason why I'm asking this is because although I know that's a level we would, we have a goal of getting at, I'm trying to, I guess, weigh which one comes first, solving immediate needs or looking to the future? I know both are kind of problems we have to solve in tandem, but just to me, immediately, I would think that we would need to solve, solve our ambulance time before we address some of those insurance issues. And I think we can all agree, we're all for economic development, and we're, I'm very grateful for Leadgo and what they do for us, as well as bringing in all those amazing businesses who do foot the bill, and they do lower our tax roll. But I think it's a multifaceted approach of thinking, not just of those things, but how we can meet the needs. I have a lot of elderly people in my district, as well as districts one and six and all of our districts. And so I just know that particularly kind of in our corner, since we're so far and not so centralized, our ambulance times are more in the black. And so I'm just wondering, I guess, I've been on a little goose hunt for a couple months now, just trying to figure out how the puzzle pieces work. And I know that we want to make sure that all our districts' ambulance times are being met in a, in a good manner. Now I am done.
Thank you, Mr. Pirtle.
Okay, what improves our ISO ratings, fire trucks or ambulances?
Fire trucks. Personnel.
Personnel.
Personnel and fire.
Equipment, not there, but we still have the same issue to, whether we have the equipment or not, we still have the same issue with personnel trying to get them on there.
Yes.
Whether it's ambulances or whether it's fire trucks.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, these 15 or 16 guys, men and women that you've got coming on, are they training just to be firefighters or both?
No, they'll, eventually, in two years, they will be dual-trained as firefighter-medics. In five months, they'll be trained as firefighter in EMT basics, which is the minimum requirement by the state to ride them on a fire apparatus and count them as manpower.
Okay, okay. So it makes no difference about the equipment, it's the personnel that we have to worry about?
Correct. Now, if they were paramedic only and not certified as firefighters, you would lose ISO credit for that. ISO does not recognize the medical credential as part of your on-duty available staff.
Do we have any of those?
No.
Okay.
Well, I take that back. We may hire someone in as a paramedic, but they don't go to work in the field until they get their firefighter certification.
But there are other things we can do, right, to make up the deficit for not having certain things on that ISO rating? Isn't there some other things that we could potentially go through to get that rating?
To improve from a two to a one?
Yes, that don't have to deal with the apparatus.
There were, there were four, well, actually, there were five recommendations. One of them was just accomplished at the last council meeting by upgrading the fire code, maintaining the highest maximum points available for having a more recent code adopted. The other three big ones were the three apparatus gaps that we have in our response coverage around the city. This was discovered or relayed to us in 2015 and repeated earlier this year by our evaluation of our current status. And then the really only other factor that was called out was to improve our pre-fire planning process was going to gain us a fraction of a couple of points.
Were you done, Mr. Pirtle?
I'm, I'm thinking, yes, ma'am.
I had, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Conley. I do actually have just a clarifying question. Will you remind me when, because we put an ambulance, a new ambulance service online, when did that happen?
In January of 2022.
Okay, and that would be, I mean, a little bit, is it fair to say that that's a little bit of the problem that we're, or maybe a lot of the problem that we're seeing, that when we added that additional service, we did not have the staff to support it?
Sure, it essentially doubled our vacancies. That one, that one move of creating those six positions overnight doubled the amount of vacancies we likely had at the time.
Right, so we're kind of dealing with that, with the overtime situation, and I appreciate the efforts that you guys are making to address that. But that is, in hindsight, something that adding that additional service only compounded that problem, and we didn't have the staffing levels to Mr. Pirtle's point. So personnel is probably the, right. I just want to make sure I had the date correct on that. Mr. Conley, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to, first, I appreciate, I know, I just want to say that this work session, you know, we know we're in a tight budget. We've talked about that in the last couple of meetings, and we've got to be really detailed, these questions, and how we're utilizing, we want, we want our people to get a raise in some way, and also be very diligent with taxpayer money. I just, my question for you, Chief Steelman, I appreciate your, your time. Okay, we talk about, you know, you mentioned since COVID, and we're talking, because, you know, in any, in any business, when you have turnover, training people, like we've mentioned, that's, that's, that's an extra cost. So we're looking at almost a million dollars over what's normally budgeted for overtime. And we're still going to be, even though we're staffed right now, we're not fully staffed. So my question, and you mentioned, you know, things have been tough, like you said, in medical, and so like, since COVID, what's been our retention rate or our turnover rate in the fire department? Because I know that's a big expense to train, and that causes and that causes undue overtime on other, on other staff members.
So when do we want to say COVID ended?
You tell us.
I've still got people sick with it today, so I don't know that it will ever end. But the official end date was May of 2022, I believe, when the federal government ended COVID?
Yeah, well, just in the last, the trend of the last few years.
So in 2022, we had 23 people separate and we hired 21, and then we added the six when we created the pneumatic. In 2023, we had 24 people separate, we hired 25, and we added a position. In 2024, we had 15 people separate, we added, we hired 29 and added one position. Now, that 29 is reflective of the 16 that haven't officially started yet, but they've been given final job offers.
One thing, a couple of that. So if you looked at the last three years, they had nine apprentices, then they had 15 at the end of the year, and they've had seven, I'm sorry, nine, then 17, and now 15. So I want you to, I want to again reiterate, there's a number of levers that City Council has given us to pull in incentive-based pay, ambulance ride pay, the reopening of the apprentice. So obviously, we all thought the incentive pay would get us full. We thought people would want to come here. Then we heard it was the ambulance pay that we didn't get is why they weren't coming. So we got the ambulance pay, we were successful in that. And so what I tell you is, it takes to bring those people on board, it's, we've been working on this ever since the first budget I presented to council, and I'd like to tell you we're done, but I don't think we're done yet, so.
So you gave the numbers, like the new, the people we lost. What's the, what total, what's your total staff?
When we're fully staffed, 187.
What's sworn personnel on that, Chief?
That's 107. It gets technical. Do you count the people in the office that wear a uniform and a badge, or just the people in operations that are in the field delivering the service?
The ones with the certified.
So it's...
It's 164, 175.
Around in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Moore.
What's your policy on overtime?
As far as...
Like your employees, like if you have one that said 1,000 hours in overtime?
Historically, has been no cap. We have two different types of overtime opportunity. We have voluntary overtime, that you make yourself available to work additional hours of work, and we have mandatory. When we run out of voluntary, we have to kick in the mandatory and make people hold over that may have had other plans for the day, to meet the minimum staffing needs of the department.
Okay. But so when you see someone that's getting eight, 900 hours worth of overtime and you got somebody that's 24 hours worth of overtime, you don't have a policy to say, hey, I need you, I mean, just even with burnout alone?
No, we historically never have had anything like that. We take advantage of the people that voluntarily want to make themselves available to work before we force people to have to work those mandatory shifts.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, obviously, the mandatory overtime is not something you want for your culture morale. So what percentage of time that you would estimate that actually happens?
Mandatory has been an issue this year. I don't have a breakdown of, I can get that for you. I don't have a breakdown of the comparison between the voluntary and the mandatory. Like I said, it ebbs and flows. It depends on what's going on, timing of the year. There's so many different variables in that. I can certainly get that and provide that to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Moore.
The training certification and all that process, have we, how long have we done that? Are we doing that in-house or?
Well, yes, in conjunction. So we're starting with these 16, essentially these 10 that are starting classes, full-time students on the 12th or the 13th. They are going through a hybrid process that we've developed in partnership with Kilgore College, where we can expedite the amount of time that it's going to take to get them through there so that we can get them in the field quicker than historically has been the case.
When did y'all start doing that?
This will actually be the first class going through this hybrid process.
And how much, how much of it shortened the time?
I'm sorry.
How much of it shortened the time to get them on the?
Probably a month, month and a half, maybe two.
And then how often, how often are they enrolling? Is it just a semester basis or?
No, it's a special class that will be just for these 10 people. It's a, they're allowing us the opportunity, it's kind of an experiment, to run them through this process. It's, for the largest part, it's going to be our people teaching our people to get them prepared to come to work for the Longview Fire Department.
And if you had one more person come in and say they want to do this, how long do they have to wait till you get another class going?
Yeah, it, we'd have to probably, you got to make it worth the college's while to have the people to establish the class, right? So it would, it would be another process down the road, which we actually have, our next hiring process is already open. One of the other huge pivots that we did that hasn't happened since probably the late 70s or early 1980s, we lowered our minimum hiring age to 18. It's historically been 21. We did an experiment in the mid-2000s, we lowered it to 19, and had a really bad experience with that, raised it right back up to 21. And it's been that ever since. So again, it's just another lever that we're trying to pull to improve our applicant pool.
Okay, so that's new to help with that. Should we consider not trying to target fully staffed, but try to target being overstaffed due to the lag nature of getting somebody through? And then also, it seems like we're lacking a couple of apparatuses, which that means we're really not technically fully staffed, even when we have...
There's all kinds of theories in the fire service that really you should be hiring 1.4 people for every one person that you hire because of the scheduling and the complications of all of that. It depends on whose study you want to look at. And then, yes, if you want to dovetail that into the fact that, but by the ISO study, we are lacking essentially three apparatus to score perfectly to show that we meet the fire potential need here in the city of Longview.
How many positions is that?
Well, if it's fire apparatus, it'd be three on each one, so that's nine per shift. So that's 27 people, if you were to try to pull that lever overnight.
So 27 in addition to the 187
Yes.
that you're running right now, plus you already have people that are going to have, you're going to have turnover and churn and all that stuff, right? So that's something to consider, like, it seems like trying to target to be fully staffed, you're constantly always going to be behind in that method. And then, and this is just for future consideration, not to figure out a result right now. But a lot of this is happening. You mentioned the wall time due to the hospitals, and I don't know what lever as a city we have because why would they be incentivized to increase staffing to remove our wall time? And then also, you have the issue with the assisted living places where they are not really vetting who is, who they're letting in, because they're supposed to show that they are able to maintain themselves. But what's happening, from my understanding, is there's a lot of calls that are going out because they're, these...
We become their assisted living helper.
Correct. And that makes it worse, a strain on the city, because the assisted living here is not actually doing the due diligence upfront to take in people that should be going in there. And I don't know what we can do as a city to rectify that, if there's anything at all, but I do want to make that a consideration. And that's cause, that would help a lot of the strain on the fire department. That's all.
Thank you. Good discussion, guys. Go ahead, Ron.
I had one thing to add to this. So I will tell you, for the last two years during budget discussions, I have encouraged Chief Steeman to start getting to the point of being able to be fully staffed, and as the overtime comes down, which is what we are all talking about and what we are being intentional about, is to replace that with certified paramedic openings, which is more cost-effective for the city, to start and begin the process of starting to have that over-hire for when you have those type of things. So I will tell you, that has been a discussion, just the discussions that y'all have leading to. We've had that discussions for two years now. We've had the discussions about the mandatory overtime, which is something you don't want to do. But you also, when you expand service, we're mission-driven, we want to deliver that service. And so, and with respect to the questions, you know, you've said there's people that are making all this money. A lot of times, in the way that they've been operating, it's been, they're just happy to have somebody that said yes. And so is that something we need to look at? We certainly can and talk about that. But I just want y'all to know, the discussions that we've led, we have been talking about this and getting to a point that as overtime comes down, we just add some regular full-time paramedic firefighters, so we can fill them in the different shifts as we have vacancies.
And just to clarify, we are all glad that people are willing to work overtime. I mean, being in the healthcare field, you know, it's a demanding field, so there is no way that we're not saying that we're glad. We just want to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible and doing everything that we can to hire personnel and to overstaff so we can prevent budgeting for overtime and budgeting to recruit versus budgeting $2 billion in overtime.
100% agree with you.
I'm sorry if that came across. I was just saying...
No, I just want to make sure that we're clarified.
Right. No, we're all thankful they show up, no doubt.
Yeah, good?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, I think, to add, you know, we're using the word term overstaffing recruitment, but really, it's about retention too, because when we lose people, that's when we're in this position.
Sure. Good?
Yes.
Yep, go ahead.
And then I just want to clarify something too, and Chief Boone can correct me if I'm wrong on this too, but if in fire, to get additional money, you work overtime. I mean, that's the way, the nature of it. Police officers, they can work private security jobs that pay fortunately, or unfortunately, higher pay than you can get in typically as a law enforcement officer. So this, overtime, the police would be much more challenging to try to satisfy due to the fact that they can do those other private security jobs as well. So it's a little different nature of, between fire and police, I think.
Yeah, but police are, is the budgeting around $240,000 for overtime compared to the million, correct?
It's about $240,000.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying.
Okay, good, good, good discussion, guys. I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate the efforts that you guys have made. I think these are healthy, important conversations for us to have, for us to be aware of, that this is an issue that is being addressed and you guys have a plan in place. But yeah, I think the opportunity to talk about this all together is really nice. So I think, though, we're probably ready to move on to the next slide. You've got more slides in here.
We're all grateful for fire and police, so thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. And at the end of the day, right, we are very grateful for everything you guys do, and the underlying importance of that is our response times. Chief Steeman's real serious about those response times. He will send you a report if you want it. That is what he is after, at the end of the day, being responsive to those health emergencies in our community. So when we talk about that on the backend, we're just making sure we're doing the right thing. But thank you for making that a priority, and that's why we need additional personnel, that's why we need additional services, making that a priority. So that's wonderful. Okay, I'm ready.
So you didn't ask for this necessarily, but I figured if you asked for options about pay raises, I thought it was incumbent upon me to provide you some options for pay raise implementation. So I don't have a ton of options. I have two primary options. One thing that I really want council to consider when implementing a pay raise is, remember that, that pay plan and pay structure is key. It's a key element that we use to grow our future leaders from within the organization. You've heard me talk about that. So that pay plan is what helps us get the people that want to do the extra, that want to move up and have a career path, the people like me that want to be here. I'm on my 24th year. I want, this is where I want to work. And to encourage people of that, that pay plan's important, because ultimately, we want to encourage the first ones, the lowest ones to come and say, hey, where do you want to stop your career? Because we have tuition reimbursement, we have a great team here, we want people to move up through the organization. And at every new employee orientation, Marianne and I both take pictures of everybody that's up there, and there's one blank photo, and it's like, who's next out of you to take the advantage of the opportunities? And you'll be surprised when you see people's eyes think, wow, I have a career here, I can move up. So maintaining that's important, to keep those employees who are dedicated to the city. So these are the two options I have. I would say neither of them are things you're going to thank me for. I would say, you know, option one, you could fund the salary increases by allocating the money we have for street maintenance fund to supplement the increase in compensation. What I would tell you, the reason I say to do that is because if you implement raises, next year, we're going to have to pay for those raises, and we don't want to lay people off next year. So, but to keep this, if council says, well, maybe we want to move forward and try the raises and see if things get better economically, you could use a one-time use of your general fund reserves to say, hey, if it costs us a million and a half for the pay plan that you want to implement, you can take a one and a half million dollar one-time fund transfer to say, we're going to keep street maintenance level and see what happens next year. I think you heard in my earlier presentation, the thing that you have to be wary of when you do that is you sort of create a problem for the future if things don't look great. You wind up with talking about, well, how are we going to fund a deficit if we should have one, and then, and then how do we keep the street maintenance from being cut where we cut it to? Alternatively, on Friday, we received information about the voter approval rate. So option two, the City Council could consider adopting the voter approval rate or some portion of the voter approval rate to, there's about 3.69 cents that you could increase the tax rate, which would create about $2.95 million in revenue, and you could use that for needed recurring expenses for the pay raises or the street maintenance. So I will tell you that, that's, those aren't popular options, but those are the only two options I know of that you can do what you want to do and protect the city in the future from that decision. The 3.69 cents works out roughly to, it's $800,000 a penny is what you can raise. So Mr. Newstad, I think, had asked me, well, what would it cost to do the raises, just the raises alone? If you decided to implement the raises, keep the street maintenance funds at what I have proposed budget, you could do a two cents per $100 in valuation. That's, every penny is about $800,000. So those are the two options I have for implementation, and that concludes my options for you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McPhee. I do want to make one comment, and then I'm coming to Mr. Conley. I just, I think I can probably speak for all of us when I say that nobody up here wants to pull money out of fund balance to do these things. Nobody wants to talk about raising taxes to do these things. Those are hard decisions, hard conversations. We've talked about things that we want to see happen, pay increases, talking about the needs for staffing with fire that we know has additional needs, will have additional needs in the future. So these are all really hard conversations, and I'm proud of us for being able to do this civilly, consider hard options. But I think it was fair to just come out and say, nobody is a fan of either of these options. These are unpleasant. Thank you for bringing them to us. They are hard conversations we need to have, but I think I can speak for everybody when I say nobody wants to do either of these things. Mr. Conley, go ahead.
Yeah, so going back, when you look at option one, you know, again, I agree, you don't, we don't, we're having to make tough decisions. So, but when we look at, we did have, we started this meeting with, we just, our front bout's at $26 million, correct, right now?
Yes, sir.
And then we are going to explore Leadco, some options that we discussed earlier with either street maintenance or something with the parks that could help there. And then even with the 1,500, so with the 1,500 flat, it's a little bit over a million dollars. And so I just think I'd, with money in reserve there and money that we've discovered and opportunities with Leadco, I think we'd, I'm just speaking for me, I think I'd prefer that over asking for tax increases.
I'd like to...
Are you finished?
Yes, I'm finished, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Campbell.
I'd like to echo Mr. Conley. I'd rather look at using the portion of the street maintenance from the supplemental general fund reserves and then looking at the Leadco options for the streets, or those infrastructure issues that need to be done, just because, yeah, just to keep it simple. That's it.
Sure. Are you finished?
Yes.
Good. Mr. Pertle?
Ron, have you run any numbers on what, the taxpayer out there understands, they don't understand the two cents and all this kind of stuff? On an average house cost, say $250,000, what's the number's going to, going to run on that?
I thought someone may ask this. Richard found out the value, average value of a home in Longview is $223,311. So the full 3.69 cents is 82.41 a year or $6.87 a month?
Which wouldn't affect me, mine are frozen, so.
Right, right, right.
No, I mean, I understand that.
So basically, every penny would be about, according to that, so you got three pennies, so you're talking pennies equal to, I'm not, it's not very good.
Yeah, you challenge a month, sorry.
Two, 23. Two, two twenty-three.
Three dollars, three dol, two to three dollars a, a month extra.
Twenty-two dollars and twenty-three cents per cent.
I knew somebody in here who did pretty good at that. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Were you done, Mr. Pirtle?
Per year.
I am, yes.
Per year.
Or there could be a hybrid option.
That's true. I guess we need to talk about our, you know, our capacity for those things. I would, I guess my comment would be, the things that we're talking about are annual ongoing things. Pay raises are, additional fire staffing is, road maintenance that we've, we're pulling out. Those are things that are only going to increase that we'll need next year. So I think we need to have a real serious conversation about these two options. And they're hard ones, and they're very unpleasant. But, you know, for us to take it out of fund balance, that's an easy fix this year, but then we're back having this conversation next year. I was a little concerned and surprised, you know, this year's budget is 95. The one we're talking about is 95. So we, you know, we each know from our own cost of living increases, that's hard to do just with inflation, just with trying to talk about pay increases. That is a hard thing. That is a hard budget to prepare. This year is the exact same as next year. So when we think about adding the stuff we all want to add, we want to make public safety a priority. We want those response times. I think on our next slides, we're going to talk about needed apparatuses, those capital things that will have personnel that we'd have to continue to add. Those are only increased operating expenses every year. So I, I, that's, those are hard conversations, but I think we need to talk about a hybrid, talk about both options very seriously. Yeah, go ahead.
So, so Richard, I, I, I prepared a couple of slides and I, what council decides is what I'm not trying to, I believe it is my job to let you guys know the bumper rails of what we're talking about. You have heard me talk for three years. Some of you are tired to hear me say it. The world we live in in revenue constraints on municipal governments is different than it was years ago. It is very different. They have had a number of tax changes that have affected us. We have lost valuations on the property tax rolls to the tune of a half a billion dollars. Many of those are due to market value adjustments of oil and gas, which is important. The other things is, as the appraisals have gone up, we've gone from having seven lawsuits against the appraisal district to over 100 lawsuits against the appraisal district about valuations. So there is more property being contested with values in this. I did some forecasting on a model. Director Cohen actually created a model that I asked her to do. And there are, there, if, if we continue to grow 2.5% in revenues across the board, and we continue to see the same type of expenses increased we've seen from last year to this year, which those are debatable, right? You have to make assumptions based on this. But without that, we're looking at deficits next year just on that. So when I've, when I've talked about, and I've told you, I don't have the, the necessary models to be able to tell you, but if you, let's just say we do a million dollars on employee pay, which I've told you before, I'm 100%. The employees are absolutely the biggest asset we have, and they're the ones we need to be working for recruiting and retaining. And that has been a lion's share of my efforts over the past few years. If you create that issue of, of a million dollars being behind in addition to the forecast losses, which range between, somewhere between about a half a million to a million and a half, you're looking at a 2.5 to $3 million deficit starting out next year, revenues versus expenses. So to the mayor's point, it's, if you think about doing these things, some of these things don't go away, and nobody's costs have gone down in the businesses that they've, that they've had over the last few years. And so it has finally caught up to, to Longview. And, and I'm just saying, we can do whatever its council's desire to do, but understand next year, it's going to be much different than what it is today.
We're in a very unfortunate position of having to explain to voters a reduction in services. We're reducing road maintenance. We're pulling this new ambulance out of service. We're doing these things because we're committed to not increasing the property tax rate. I mean, that, there's, that is a rock and a hard place. There's no good choice there, to be honest. But that is the hard position we find ourselves in. We are explaining to voters reduction in services that we are, you know, okay with. Or we are talking about probably needing to increase the property tax rate, or doing a hybrid, or having a very serious conversation about where those funds are going to come from. Even the things we've thrown out tonight, you know, that could be cut, could be requested from other places, they're not at the level of the, the funding that we're talking about, even for that pay raise or for additional staffing. Those are, those are higher numbers. Mr. Newstad?
How much is the road maintenance reduction from the budget to get to the full?
230 is what you said at the beginning.
It's $230,000, and our planned maintenance was $300,000, which is roughly, if you're throwing darts, about an 8% reduction.
Okay, so the total cost, the total amount?
2.77, 2.77 million is what the maintenance we would be doing next year on the budget I proposed instead of the 3 million that was requested.
Okay, so shortfall then is?
230.
Point two, yeah, 230, okay. And then, we already talked about the, the third option on the pay. If we did the flat, if we did the 2% raise with the flat thousand, it's 1.65 million. And with, it'll keep us within, maintains the pay plan, which we are already at 90% market pay on that. And then we, we didn't get the calculation, I don't think, Richard, for the, if we did the two cents in, on the property tax for the 100,000?
It's going to be $44.60.
Somewhere around there, 44.
Per year, which is about $4 a month.
And that, yeah, then that would, is that going to pay, that's the one, is that going to be paid for the pay for the third option, or is that for the fourth option?
That would, that would be for, just if you just did, if you adopted a tax rate to fund the one, the third option, it would be two cents on the tax rate would cover it.
So that was for the third option, not the fourth option?
Yes, sir.
Okay, awesome. Awesome. Thank you, that's what I had.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Conley?
I just want to say, I appreciate the options. And I do think, as far as the pay raise options, but I do, I want to go back to, Mr. Pirtle talked about this. And when you, if you could go back to the slide with the different options, I think, I agree with what Mr. Pirtle said at one of our previous meetings about prioritizing the lower wage earners. And that one, you know, that flat 1,500, it seems, based on your explanation, would be the least expensive and also prioritize the people that are, that, that need the money, that need it the most right now in the tough times of our economy. And that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Pirtle?
So the, the two cents would get us at $44 a month for a 200, a quarter of a million dollar house. Most houses in Longview, probably around the 200, 225,000 dollar range. So we're looking at $2, looking at $4 a month is what you're telling me. Now, on the budget, how far does that get us on to these raises? I mean, are the, you're, you're telling me the raises are going to cost 1.4 million?
My recommendation, so you, and forgive me, if, my recommendation was, I want, I would recommend to council they do the 2% and the flat, because it maintains the integrity of the pay plan that I'm supposed to do. The two cents per hundred funds that plan.
Okay, instead of the three cents per hundred?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because going out of the, the reserve fund balance is not an option to me because it's going to be gone every year after every year after every year. And that's something that we have to have there, at least double it up from what it is now. And it's an ongoing expense. It's not like a car payment. It's going to be the same every month. It's going to, every year, it's going to go up and up and up. So the two cents, even though it, I hate to do that, but at the same time, if, if, if a guy's sitting there and needs an ambulance, he's not going to care whether he pays $44 a month or $4,400 a month. So you have to look at every crisis as it comes along, you know. It's a little bit easier paying a little every month than it is dipping it out of the fund balance in next year, dipping it out of again, and then in five years' time, you're down to nothing.
You're correct.
You know. The two cents, you said will, will cover most of that, but that's an option for us.
Yes, sir.
And that would get us, that would keep us on an even keel year after year for a while. Okay. I'm through. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or discussion? I think we do have more slides to keep going through. Just keeps on coming.
Thank you for pointing out the, that it's reoccurring expenses and the gravity of having to make those choices and.
Sure, and based on council's comfort of doing it, I'd love to have a conversation kind of about where you're at, what you're comfortable with. So if we can provide any instruction to staff to come back on Thursday with, here's a little more details on what we hear you saying that, you know, are kind of more lined out options, that's perfectly appropriate or after the meeting to Mr. McPhee.
Do you want that now, or you want that?
Maybe at the end, yeah, you're right. Good question.
I was going to say, I was just going to tag on what you're saying.
You're right, let's do it at the end. Yep, sorry. Okay, go on, we're ready.
Okay. I will invite back up our man of the hour, Chief Steeman.
So we put this together just to make sure council was familiar with how our apparatus distribution looks around the city. Richard came up with some pretty crafty symbols there. The crosses represent frontline ambulance. The rolls of hoses represent frontline engine companies, and the ladders represent frontline truck or ladder companies. So you can tell the way that they're dispersed around town by that chart at each of the stations. The yellow ones that he put up there represent reserve apparatus. So again, same, same methodology, the crosses are ambulances, the whole rolled hose is engines, and the ladders are ladders. And the one station that it added in when he did that last little bump, that's what's out at our fleet maintenance shop. And one of the things that we've been struggling with over the last several years is the turnaround time that it takes not only to get new fire apparatus in, once we order them. I'll give you an example. Pre-pandemic, to get a brand-new fire engine took about 10 months. Now it takes 30. To get a brand-new ladder truck was 12 months. Now it's about 40 to 45. Ambulances are taken over a year. I mean, we've had ambulances ordered now from the last budget year that were due to receive, I think in December of this year. So that process has really, has really created, wreaked some havoc with our replacement schedule. And what it's caused us to do is that we're hanging on to reserve apparatus way longer than we should have. We have reserve apparatus still that we're running frontline that should have already been rotated out of our fleet. But had we done that, we wouldn't have anything to operate with right now because of the backlog that we're waiting on these new fire apparatus that you've already committed to, to actually come in for us to put into service. So it's all part of just that, that overall picture of how, how complicated it's gotten just to staff and to operate the fire department every day from an apparatus standpoint. We currently have in reserve status, and this is fluid. So I would dare to say that we have a couple of reserve ambulances in the field right now, running frontline, as frontline ambulances, because we have primary ambulances that are in the shop for repairs, that were probably waiting for parts owned for two or three months. We have fire apparatus that are in the shop, that, that have been in the shop for months. I think right now, we're down to having one fire engine reserve and one ladder truck reserve available for use. We actually have one at a lot at our repair shop that was, it's a ladder truck that was 25 years old, that was due to be rotated out five years ago. But because we anticipated this, we've, we've, we've hung on to it way longer than we should have because we had to have something to get into when those frontline units go down and need repair. And sometimes those repairs can be pretty lengthy. So just want to kind of paint that picture for you of how the, the complexities, not whining or crying. I'm just telling you, that's been a big shift in the fire service that we're really struggling with as an agency, not just here in Longview, but around the state and my peers in other states. It's commonplace now that it's taken, there's just a huge backlog of getting things as fast as we need them. So it's really, it's really train wrecked our replacement schedule. So happy to answer any questions on that.
Okay, Mr. Pirtle?
Yes, sir.
I've always wondered why you, you rank calls at different priorities, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we always have to have an engine going out with an ambulance?
Not always, but it's all designed in the dispatching process of what that call is determined to be and how close those available resources may be able to get to it. And, and most of that's based on national standards. So the, the national standards to have a fire apparatus or a first responder to your incident is four minutes. And that's anywhere in the city. To have that ambulance get to the scene is typically eight minutes. On a fire, to have the balance of the response show up is the eight-minute window. So it, it's like Mrs. Shihara was speaking about a while ago, everything that we do is based on some type of a timestamp of how quickly those resources can get there. And that's one of the things, you know, with the additional units that are identified from the ISO study. Yeah, it, going from a two to a one, there is a, there is a value to that. But filling in those gaps in our response coverage is part of what's driving that, of having that connectivity of those fire apparatus that are positioned geographically around the city in the right place, hopefully available at the time when they're needed. It's, it's just, it's, it's about the completeness of the system. And right now, what it's shown us is that we have gaps. It's shown us this two different, two different ISO evaluation processes in our road.
Well, what I, what I was asking is, you know, if you have a wreck, that's one thing. I can see an engine and an ambulance going out if it's called on. But if you have a, a heart attack or something like that going on at a residence, do we need to send an engine out with that?
So the idea is that because of the availability of the fire apparatus, there's more fire apparatus available in the city at any given time typically than there are ambulances, that that first responder on that, on that ALS, Advanced Life Support Level Fire Apparatus is going to get to your emergency to initiate treatment with a lot of the same instruments and training and protocols that the ambulance is going to bring. Now, the ambulance does have a few more implements on it that we don't carry on our fire apparatus, but then the ambulance's main job is to get you to the hospital, to the higher level of care. So the idea of sending that fire apparatus first is to, number one, stop that clock, right? That four-minute clock that's running on that event. If you're not breathing, Ms. Moore, Ms. Moore can tell you that when you're not breathing, you don't have oxygen going to your brain. If that happens for over four minutes, there's a pretty good chance you're going to have some type of permanent deficit if you are able to be resuscitated. So that's how critical that time is to get that help there, to get that oxygen flow going back to that brain through good CPR, oxygenation, ventilation, all those kinds of things. So that's a lot of times, and it's, it's, it's funny, we've been running EMS in the city since 1987, and people still get frustrated when they call 911 expecting an ambulance to show up first and a fire truck beat them there. I mean, people, people get wound up sometimes when a fire truck shows up first, but it's, it's not about the unit. It's about the people and the equipment that show up to stop that harm.
So why does the engine show up before the ambulance?
It's proximity to the call.
Do they come out of the same station? Five for, five for instance.
So a lot of times, yeah, if, if they come out, just the order that they left in.
Coming to my house, let's say for instance.
And the engine beat the ambulance?
I, I'm not saying, I don't know either or, but I'm just saying they're both there, and I'm going, okay. You know, I mean, we don't have a fire, we don't have a wreck. Why have I got both of these here?
Well, depending on the acuity, the, 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 the type of your incident, a cardiac arrest, okay? A lot of times when that event, when that patient's being transported into the hospital, there's not less than three people in the back of that ambulance providing simultaneous types of care around that patient.
Yeah.
And that's delivering the highest level of care possible. Instead of having one paramedic in the back that's trying to do seven different things, you've got three or four different people in the back that are doing multiple things at the same time. That's improving your outcome and your chances of survival.
Yeah, I know. And I, I've been asked this question before because everybody says, well, why do we have so many fire trucks running around? And ambulance is with them and, you know, and that wears and tears on the, on the engines, I know.
Sure.
And, and the men, you know, because they could get a call and need to go to a fire.
Right.
There's a 10% chance they're going to a fire versus 80 or 90% chance they're going to go to an ambulance call, you know. But I, I just wondered, what priority level do you start and stop that at?
So again, it's all back to the line of questioning from whoever's making the 911 phone call.
Okay.
If they mention the word that they're having difficulty breathing, that's going to escalate it to a higher acuity call, and it's going to get a different response. Now, when you get there, it may be a normal event that's causing that difficulty breathing, because they're, they answered yes to that question in the line of questions that the call taker is, is getting that information. That's how they base what that response is going to look like based on that need. Now, our crews are tuned in enough to know a lot of times that they can read between the lines on some of these, and they'll disregard the engine if they think they've got the right amount of people. And, and they may be familiar with the patient and know that that higher level or that additional unit's not needed. Or if they, if they get there and determine it's needed, they'll call for it to respond then. We give them that kind of flexibility a lot to be able We give them that kind of flexibility a lot to be able to make those judgment calls on the fly.
Good, thank you. Good, Mr. Pirtle?
I'm through, thank you.
Are there other questions? Yes, Mr. Conley.
So at our last meeting, we talked about being creative. Uh, we talked, we've talked options about, with the, with the facilities. We, we were asking questions about the fire truck, possible for a fire truck, which is, uh, 1.4.
Four.
Four million dollars. But, so I heard you, I hear you, so earlier you said, and I know we've got to be proactive, we need... But if we, if we even ordered one right now for 1.4 million dollars, it would take us, how long did you say to get a new?
Roughly 30 months before we take delivery.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
They have layaway?
I'm sorry.
Layaway.
I, I, I will tell you, they commonly come to us and say, well, if you ordered another one right now, we'll do this. And so that's, I mean, but that's, it's kind of the lock-in, the, the, the price request. Uh, they, they roll out price increases annually. If you guys directed us to order that engine, we would bring that back to council immediately, place that order for the engine and do a budget amendment out of the fund balance to get it on schedule, uh, because I do think that's, that's part of what, we, we need to be more preactive, proactive with the fire apparatus replacement. But I would tell you, the reason it's not been tackled before now is because we don't have the financial wherewithal to sustain it.
Is that a later slide? Are we talking about this again later?
Yes, we're going to talk about the vehicle replacement fund.
I had a question, I was just gonna...
Sure.
Okay, all right, let's, uh, everybody ready to move on to the next one then? Vehicle replacement fund? Oh, do we need to, go ahead. All right. Uh, Dwayne, you're up, but Mr. McPhee's taking a break, so you're stuck with us.
I've got it. Okay, um, today we want to talk about the vehicle replacement fund. Um, the vehicle replacement fund was established in the early 2000s. Uh, we put together a team, Angela helped us get initial funding, brought that to council, and we established the vehicle replacement fund. Currently, in the fund, we have 421 vehicles that we actually replace as a part of that fund. 265 we purchase. So those are purchased using a 15-point criteria, and I'll talk about that a little bit more here in just a second. And we have 156 in the enterprise lease program, and of course, I'll talk about that as well. Those vehicles that we purchase all have a class. We establish a class for each vehicle and then criteria for that class. So some vehicles, we may say, we're going to get 100,000 miles, some will get 120 based on, uh, history and data that we have. So those criteria are the age, the maintenance cost, and the miles or hours depending on the equipment. So let me talk about the enterprise fund. Um, the enterprise fund was initially established because we had 195 vehicles that we were going to look at for this fund. 65 of them were over 10 years old. We were, we were struggling at the time, and this was a great answer. So that allowed us to, uh, reduce the size of the fleet, and the reason that was is we really looked at those vehicles and we found underutilized vehicles and were able to remove those from the fleet. Uh, they get replaced every four years, so that, that gives us safer vehicles, they're, they're better fuel economy on those type of vehicles. Um, and one of the biggest benefits that we gained was it freed up our technicians. So the technicians that were having to work on small vehicles are now working on these heavier trucks where the cost of repairs is significantly higher. I put together a little comparison here, and I don't want to go too deep into it, but if you'll look, um, at the purchase column to the, to the right, that's one unit. So in nine years, you'll replace that one unit, because that's a, that's the replacement cycle we had, was nine years. The enterprise lease will do 2.25 units in that same nine years. I don't want to get confusing, but that's to give you an idea of cost. And so if you compare, I mean, you look at the cost of ownership, it, there's a savings with enterprise, um, that, over the purchase. And it allowed us to really, the main thing is we fixed those problems that we had. We had all those vehicles that are older, we don't have that problem anymore, it's taken care of. And we have the benefits, the other benefits as far as technicians and just having newer vehicles out there for our staff to drive. I will say, on the vehicle replacement, because of the cost of the fire trucks and because of the cost of garbage trucks, they're not part of our vehicle replacement program. So I just want to make sure and let you know that. And so with that, I'll answer any questions about, uh, you know, the enterprise or, or lease. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so you said we have 156 cars in the lease program?
Yes.
And so overall, when we started this program, did we see any significant savings? Because looking at it, it's not that much of savings, but looking at the budget and it's tripling from last year, I'm just trying to see where the actual savings was.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure, it's not a good comparison to look at one line. And the reason that is, is because we have maintenance costs that have lowered significantly over time because we moved these vehicles into the enterprise. We've got...
Can we go back to the other slide with the maintenance?
This one here?
Mm-hmm. Now, go ahead, what you were saying about the maintenance cost?
Yeah, so you can see here, like, if we had purchased a vehicle and we keep it for nine years, the maintenance cost is significantly higher. I put 10,000 on here as a very conservative number. Um, but we, it's a fleet vehicle, I know when we look at our personal cars, like $10,000 in nine years, but we're talking about fleet vehicles, and, and they see significant wear, they really do.
And so on the maintenance, does enterprise maintenance, are we paying for the maintenance? How does that work?
We pay for a full maintenance package, so basically we pay a set amount each month, and then they cover all maintenance.
Is that in this cost on here?
Yes, that's the 4,002.16. So that's for two, 2.25 vehicles over nine years, that's what we would pay in maintenance for that, for that full maintenance program.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a question. So you said...
So we're, we're, have additional costs with the maintenance that's embedded with the enterprise fleet charge? And you said we had le, uh, less need for technicians as far as they could work on large vehicles? Have we had a reduction in staff of technicians due to this?
No, and, and that's mainly because we had a need. So we were either going to bring more staff on, or we were going to better utilize them. And so this allowed us to better utilize those and put them on the heavy trucks. We haven't had to increase the staff.
We haven't had to increase, I'm saying have we had a decrease in staff?
No, we have not decreased, no.
That's all, huh?
Okay.
I just have a question. So does enterprise give us the corporate rate for this, or do they have like different rates for businesses versus like civic organizations that serve?
We're, we're actually on a co-op with enterprise, and so that's, um, so it's, it's like buy board or HGAC is one of those programs that we're on with them.
Can you explain it a little more to detail?
So it's a set pricing, that, that, and I forget the name of the co-op.
Houston-Galveston area council, it's a government, uh...
Okay.
Yeah.
So we are getting a rate, a different government rate versus what businesses pay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You good?
Yes.
Ms. Pirtle, I know you raised your hand.
Okay, Dwayne, uh, how long do we keep a leased car?
Four years.
Okay, what's the average miles on a leased car when we trade it in?
Just depends on what job it's doing. I think that's, that's one of the things that we establish when we say, okay, we're going to lease another vehicle for four years. What job does it do? And then we establish what those miles need to be with enterprise. And then, and then we talk about things like, okay, on your maintenance program, we want you to cover one set of brakes, we want you to cover one set of tires, you know, depending on how many miles it'll be driving.
Well, that, that was my next question. What does the maintenance program include? Does it include oil and changes and batteries and...
It, it includes everything.
And, uh...
It, it includes everything except for, based on the miles, like I say, it would, it would decide if we need to have tires as part of that maintenance program, and then it would be a higher maintenance cost because we include tires.
Okay.
Or we hire maintenance because we include brakes.
I've been told by some folks that some of these cars we trade in have four, 5,000 miles on them after they've been used for four years because we, some of them don't get driven that much.
I, I think we've reduced, the, if we identify those, and that was one of the things that was good about this program, and it really allowed us to take a look at our fleet and find those that are out there that's not getting utilized very often. And, and we've reduced, I bet just from doing that alone, we've probably reduced the fleet 20 vehicles, uh, if not more.
Really, you know, looking at this, it, it just doesn't seem like we're coming out ahead, especially in the maintenance issue, and it costs them $4,200 to service a car for four years, and we're, we're, it's going to cost us 10,000.
It's servicing that vehicle for, for nine years. It's the same thing, so we're servicing a vehicle for nine years for 10,000.
So if we trade it in every four years, it's not servicing it but for four years.
Well, these numbers that I'm showing you are nine years on the enterprise side so that I could give you a good comparison of nine years to nine years.
I mean, I, I drive a truck every day, and I mean, I, I put a lot of miles on my truck, and I don't spend near that kind of money other than a set of tires every so often, which is about every two years, and I, you know, I can see a police car or something like that because it's a constant, constant battle, but, I mean, God, that's, that's a lot of money. And then, uh, I don't know, I just, I couldn't lease one like that and come out ahead. And, and you're worried about the resale at the end. Well, you know, a lot of these trucks, I don't know about the cars, but a lot of the trucks hold their value really well, especially right now, even with 100,000 or 150,000 miles on them. Uh, because I have to do it all that so often every, every once in a while. I don't know, that, that maintenance just seems like, and now we're looking at fuel costs, what, what are we talking about, $12,000 in fuel costs? What, what's that got to do with enterprise versus...
It's saying that because we're replacing that one, two and a quarter times, that we're getting newer vehicles. Those newer vehicles on enterprise, uh, you get newer technologies and you have fuel savings. You can drive a vehicle for nine years, towards the end of its life, it's using a lot more fuel.
Oh, I know that, but I mean, it's just...
And so this, these, these never get over four years old, so you just, you see better fuel economy with those vehicles.
But see, they'll take these back every four years and resell them and make more money off of them.
We resell them.
Huh?
We resell them. If you look down there to sell the vehicle, that's where we really gain from this, because we get to take that vehicle and have it for just four years. It's only four years old, it's got less than 50,000 miles on it, and we sell it and we get the proceeds from that.
We get all the proceeds from that or a percentage?
We get all the proceeds. We pay a $400 flat fee for them to sell it for us. And that allows them to use the enterprise network to sell those. So it helps us out as far as that.
Uh, are you good? Uh, no. Um, can you explain the enter, the enterprise franchise, um, transfer that I saw on here? It, no, it's in the lineup.
Well...
Because it was like 1.8 million dollars that I didn't understand.
I'm not sure what, so we, we have a revenue, so we, we receive revenues in the fleet services to pay for the vehicles that we purchase and for the ones we lease. And, and what we do is we determine our total cost. Then we take things like our auction revenues and reduce that, because we, now we've got revenue coming in. And then turn, and then based on that, we determine how much revenue we really have to receive. And then we apply a percentage, and then we charge that back to the departments so that we can gain that revenue. Just so that we have enough in the fund.
Sorry, I can tell that you would like to say something.
Yes, so remember when we talked about there's the, the utility fund, and there's the sanitation fund, and then there's the general fund, and there's the drainage? And those allocations for the vehicles in each of those areas respectively get transferred in to his lease and operations and maintenance budget that he's here presenting on tonight. And so that's, that's the totality of that. In years past, that dollar amount got sent to the vehicle replacement fund, but as Mr. Archer alluded to, we had fallen behind schedule, and it was to level out the cost to be more efficient in the replacement. And to your point, Mr. Pirtle, I agree wholeheartedly. Me, I've, the enterprise tells me I'm crazy because I've hung on to a 2011 car. But one of the things that we as a government agency are able to do, and enterprise in particular has some stroke too with vehicles, being that they lease those, city, United States worldwide, we buy at a, at a cheaper rate than everybody else can. And then we don't put as many miles on them as we do, driving them for our family and our travel and everything else. So that equity savings we capture, the vehicle depreciates from what it's going for in the public. And so we wind up recouping a large amount of that on the resale, and that buys down the lease payments for the future and keeps it flat. And so that's really what, that's, that's in the magic. You're right, I've never leased a car and wouldn't do that. But in fleet vehicles and in, in operational savings, these are vehicles that, they're tough. They get, they get driven, uh, hard, they get worked hard, and so that equity does go back and buys down the next lease to keep our expenses level for the foreseeable future. There was always going to be a ramp-up in enterprise until final implementation, but most of those funds came from what was being directed to the vehicle replacement fund.
Okay, oh, I got Ms. Moren to finish, Mr. Conley, Mr. Wade, and then Ms. Gamboa.
I'm finished.
Okay, Mr. Conley, you had your hand raised.
Just a quick question, you mentioned the co-op and you said Houston and Galveston. Are there any other, what cities are also using this that we would be familiar with?
There's a lot of cities and school districts that use it, um, and, and so we were just purchasing off that, off that same contract. And I don't think it's actually HGAC, but I forget the name of it, it's like lead or something, it's a different co-op, yeah.
We can get a list of the, the government entities or the ISAs, or, and they even do some businesses they do, but it's not part of that program that we're a part of. But we can get a list for that, yes, sir.
Good. Mr. Wade?
Yes. How many years ago was it that we signed up for this?
It was in 2019.
It's 2019, so we've kind of had an opportunity to try to vet it some and see how it fits. And I'm assuming as well, one of the major benefits is the safety aspect of being able to update our employees with current, with current vehicles.
Yes, sir.
And not at the risk as before as maybe Chief Boone, even though he's probably not part of this program. But other people in the city would be able to attest that that was an issue before, that we were...
It's a big asset.
Having city vehicles that were way outdated and we were continuing to drive them correctly.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Um, I was on the council when we decided to vote for this, and I voted for it at the time, and I thought it was a really good program because it allows us to kind of operate under that and provide quality service and quality vehicles, um, for our, our staff and employees. And I'm also aware that this enterprise lease program is a trend that's encompassing even corporate America as well, where corporate America would actually lease vans to an employee, for employees to carpool to work as well. And so I, I like the program and I'm glad that we have it. Thank you.
Yep.
Good, all good?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Wade, and Ms. Gamboa.
Um, I just have a question. Do we have fleet trackers on these leased vehicles? Uh, is there a way that we track to make sure employees are truly, I know owning my own company and having our own fleet, sometimes we struggle with people driving our fleet to other things that are not work-related, thus also resulting in liability issues. How do we make sure that employees are truly only using trucks for work purposes? And what is our tracking mechanism that ensures that system is, um, in place?
I will say this, we have a large number that do have trackers, not every vehicle does. Um, sometimes we have suspicions and we will make sure and place one, um, just so that we can understand where that employee's traveling. Uh, but like I say, not all of them, but a big majority.
And a follow-up question in regards to our vehicles is, I know that we've done something to remedy this, but, um, people that have access to our, to our garage and things of that nature, who is able to work within that garage? Uh, can you explain the tool process that you explained to me that one time, and then how we prevent people from conducting business at a government site for their own personal gain?
Yeah, if, if we find out about somebody working on a vehicle there, we, we, we just can't have it, it's just not going to happen. But on the other side of that is, those mechanics, all of their tools are down there in that building. And so a lot of times, they'll need to get to their tools, or they'll, or they'll bring a vehicle there and do something real quick. Um, it, it, we don't have a problem with that, we have a problem if there's, if there's a customer-type thing, that, that, that will never happen in our facility.
Can you explain the stipend tool program? I know that you explained that to me before when I asked on a one-off, but can you explain how or why we give those stipends and then the premise behind what the ideas of us giving tools to these, uh, mechanics?
Well, we, we require, we require them to do this work, and, um, so we give them a stipend to purchase new tools because you know how tools are, they're going to, you're going to, you're going to use them up, and then you're going to need to purchase new ones. And so that stipend is used for that, for them to purchase and keep their tools up. We don't purchase tools for them, they need to supply them.
So is that almost like a fee because they're using their knowledge to, uh, see what types of tools they're getting? I just know from owning a business, you know, if someone's your employee, we, we're supposed to buy or provide those tools. So is the reason that it's only stip, it's coded in, for accounting purposes, as a stipend? because rather than someone else on staff taking the time to figure out what tools are needed or making an order form for those tools, we're just giving the mechanics a stipend so that they can use their knowledge to purchase the tools needed for whatever the operations are that we're doing within that garage? I'm just having a hard time understanding why we're giving, um, an additional pay for someone to purchase their tools versus having the tools already and then people just using the tools within our shop, I'm just not understanding.
Well, we, years ago, we purchased a lot of the tools and, and I'll have to say a lot of tools walked off. The fact that those tools are their tools, uh, they're very secure with them, I mean, there's nobody getting to those tools. It really helped with security on that. And so the amount of money that we would spend purchasing tools compared to what we're paying and that stipend is, is insignificant really.
Thank you so much for explaining it, I appreciate it.
Yeah, certainly.
Good. Mr. Newsden?
I was just gonna ask, on the, on the lease program, on the acquisition of the vehicle, are you, you paying that on a monthly basis? Not a one-time flat fee like you would if you're purchasing?
Yeah, it's, it's set up like, much like if you were to finance a vehicle, you have a payment and then so we just make that payment each month.
Well, the other option with the purchase option is that you're having to pay the whole, buy the whole vehicle.
We would pay the whole thing and then of course, you know, cover maintenance and those kinda things.
Cause it's, I mean, ultimately it's negligible between the two differences and the cost savings because you can't, you can't know for certain what you're gonna sell the vehicle for. Used auto sales, of course, over the past few years have skyrocketed, now they're on their way down. And so ultimately, it's, to me, it's looking like it just smoothes out your, so that we can better predict our spending.
Yes, that's exactly what we gain from it.
Any other questions for Mr. Archer or comments? All right, I think we're ready to move on to street maintenance, but that's you two.
All right, street maintenance.
Ooh, street maintenance.
Okay, you got it? Okay, so in March of 2003, City Council established the pavement management, uh, policy that covers how we do our maintenance. So first, before we get started, let me kinda talk about how we, how pothole forms. It's a little elementary, but I think it's just something that people need to know. Through the age and, and just traffic on a part of a roadway, you'll start to see cracking. And that cracking will then lead for moisture, so when that rain hits, that moisture makes it through that crack and it'll wet down that subbase and then it'll, eventually it'll create a void. Once that void is created, there's no support for that pavement, that pavement will collapse. And so that's how a pothole, so it's important when we talk about pavement management, it's not making sure there's asphalt, it's making sure there's a base. That subbase is the most important part of making sure that, that roadway works. So we have a company called Stantec and Stantec runs the entire city, a third of the city, excuse me, every year. So they come in town every year, they run a third of the city with this high-tech van here with some state-of-the-art equipment. And from that, they give us a pavement quality index, so the next one. That pavement quality index talks about how smooth the road is, is it cracking? You know, what's the, is it still adequate structure to that, to that roadway? And based on that, the established levels of service that council had approved, then we take a look at that and put together our maintenance program. So based on that PQI number, that, that could, uh, that will lead to maintenance. So sometimes it's a chip seal in a local road or maybe overlay in an arterial or connector. So the city maintains nine hundred and ninety-eight lane miles, so it's a significant network that we maintain. And some of those roadways have gotten to the point where they're just no longer, we, we can't do anything to maintain them. The base is the issue and that's why I wanted to talk about the pothole, the base is the issue. The road is, at this point, needs to be rebuilt. And that is not something plugged into our regular maintenance budget. So that's why, uh, when it gets to that point, uh, we've done what we can do as far as maintenance. Currently, this map, I mean, it's a little hard to, to see all the locations, but these are areas where it's just deficient asphalt. I mean, the, the roadway has gotten to the point where, uh, the PQI is under forty. And so, and I think the cost that we've established on that is twenty-five million. So to actually go and take all those with a PQI of less than forty and bring them back up would require twenty-five point five million to do. And I also wanted to talk about oil roads, cause that's been a conversation we've had over the last few years. So there is, there's about a million dollars worth of work on oil dirt roads that have a PQI of less than forty. If we said, hey, we wanna do all of the oil dirt roads in Longview, that would require us nearly fifty-six million dollars to get that done. And you can see those ones that are blue, there's a few of them are blue, those have a PQI of less than thirty. So, so they're, they're in the worst shape. And I think with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Who, who has questions for Mr. Archer or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Gamboa.
Thank you, um, just on the, while we're on the topic of roads, um, the road Cheryl and the French drain, do you have any update in regards to, is that in this?
I, I don't, I should've got one before I came in, but I don't, I'll get one to you though.
Do you have an exciting update, sad update, mid-update?
They're, they're, they're actually repairing the water lines and then they're also found the French drain and are working on reinsta, on getting that clear and draining again. So hopefully the issue that you've mentioned is being addressed and will be, so they've made, they've made good progress. I think you actually stopped by and said hello to everybody when they were out there, so.
I did, that was exciting. And then the drainage on Hawkins, I think I sent that to you. Maybe I just resurfaced that one, don't worry about that one. And then I, just because we're not going back to it and I didn't realize it, can I just ask Mr. Albertson one question in regards to parks?
Uh, can we do it at the end?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do it at the end.
Okay.
Um, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, so on this Stantec, the Stantec technology, how much is that? Is it, is it a reoccurring fee?
We do it every year, yeah, we, we pay them every year.
How much?
And, and I don't recall what that is. Um, I'll get that number to you though, I'll make sure all the council members get what that is.
So with the Stantec, so basically what they do, they ride around and tell us what grade our roads are?
Yes, they use that, that fancy van and it, all the, all the equipment that has, uh, that's on that van would actually give us those areas that we wanna know when we determine what maintenance is required.
So we're paying them yearly and at this point, we realize what our roads are. Like, we realize that they're what the grade, what grade did you say that the majority of the roads were and it would be fifty-six billion dollars?
The maj, the majority are above sixty, I mean, we, our majority of our roads are in fairly good shape, but there are some that are less than forty, yes. But if you look at that map and you see everything that's not black is above sixty.
So I guess I would wonder like the cost of that Stantec program and if we are, we know where we're at and then the cost that we're paying into that and the cost of actually doing the work, in a basis.
We know where we're at because Stantec's work that they do for us.
Yes, but.
We wouldn't really have that information if they weren't out running those roads for us, yeah. And then of course, then we have to schedule the maintenance, yeah.
It's, it's somewhere, and don't, don't quote me on this, it's somewhere between fifty and eighty thousand. It's shifted over the past years, I've been removed from that from some time. But they, they drive the data, the data's imported into the asset management program that is supported by Information Services. And then we run models based on that to inform our decisions, based on where the needs are. Not, it's not based on location, it's not based on which roads, it's, it's based on which ones we can do maintenance on and not let them fall to a level that falls below our set standards. I would venture to tell you, it's in the single digits percentage-wise of roads that don't meet the standards set by council. And I will tell you, ever since we've been managing the, the program, since it's been, since 2003, I actually presented that policy to council a long time ago. We have maintained, the target is, don't let any more percentage of our streets fall below the standard. And so we've done a pretty good job, Stantec itself will tell you, we wish people paid as much attention to the data and made their informed decisions because that's helped. It doesn't help the bad ones get better, it helps us not have more bad ones.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Mr. Conley?
So you, you said the standard, is that, uh, the PQI being at forty percent? Is that what, is that, is that the standard? Cause is the system, I guess, is the, do we, when we prepare the budget, are we anticipating what Stantec tells us as far as like, hey, some of these are gonna need it and you know, you could, you could estimate that in another year that they'll be at forty percent. But we, are you saying that we only make repairs at forty percent or less than forty percent?
Less, the, less than, see, you can see those levels of service that have been established. So on local roads, it's less than sixty, collector's sixty-five, arterial seventy.
And that, I'm sorry, go ahead. And that established level was the 2003 adoption?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'd be curious if you don't mind if I interject a comment. Um, just if, we wanna have a quick discussion about reviewing that, I mean, that's twenty years old. And this would be more in-depth than we can do tonight. But coming back at a future time and reviewing that road maintenance, I mean, just when you said 2003, I thought, well, gosh. So this is bigger than our current budget. Um, and I think if, any amount of money we gave to road maintenance, you could use and our citizens would appreciate, I know that's one thing that everybody talks about all the time. So, um, I wonder, right, if that just might be something we need to talk about more in depth. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, go ahead.
No, you're not cutting me off, cause I'm, I'm actually just trying to be educated on how this works and how being proactive and trying to be creative like we've talked about and, and if we have, um, you know, we've got something that gives us data that lets us know that roads need to be fixed, then making sure we're, maybe we need to, what's the standard, you know, what is the standard? Because if that can save us some money, um, that's, we're looking to, you know, decrease in expenditures as much as possible. And so how, how, how could that affect, affect the roads and the safety of the roads?
Yeah, I think that's a good comment. And at our retreat, I really, um, I love the point about systems, right? So maybe it's time to review the system and us, you know, but consider that policy for ourselves. Yes, Ms. Gamboa.
Um, well, that was actually one of my follow-up questions was that reviewing, just the, I, I think it was a level seven is what the council voted on the last time. And so just, uh, where we stand on that. But as we are reviewing that system, my second follow-up question, and I'm glad we're all thinking along the same brain, uh, brainwaves is, is Stantec the best company out there that does this? Are they using the best technology? Is there another company that maybe has other types of technology that can help us be more effective and efficient? As we're doing this, can they re-submit a bid to be competitive and can we open up the bidding process to other companies?
I mean, it's. It's an, we, we classify that as an engineering service and those are, those are removed from, from, uh, bidding. But what I will, what I will tell you is this, so the caution abandoning a system that we've used to maintain the network, the issue truly becomes, and there've been a number of things and, and Dwayne can bring those and talk to those about changes in repair methods. And the street department today is not what the street department twenty years ago was. They are way more capable, they have way more equipment and they have, have made more progress in how they repair roads. But I will tell you, when you shift systems, the learning curves associated with shifting systems can cause some problems when you know how a system and a model works. If you shift a model because maybe we're not throwing enough money at the roadway repairs, which that, to be honest with you, that's the needs when we did it in 2003, were two million dollars a year and council funded seven hundred thousand. So there's a gap. You can spend as much money as you want to spend, Dwayne can spend as much money as you want him to spend on street maintenance.
Yeah, I guess my point is just, this is a big old beast, let's set it for sixty, ninety days and we can talk about it again. We're not gonna, I don't think we're gonna solve this one tonight, so I think it deserves more attention. If that's okay with everybody, obviously we're gonna have to set a number in the budget, so we will address that. But, um, I think 2003 just means maybe let's talk about it and that doesn't mean we're gonna drastically change the system per se, but I think we need to look at it and, right.
And also look at like, Ms. Gamboa talked about some type of competitor.
Absolutely, sure.
After twenty years, making sure we're.
Sure.
And things may come with hiccups, but a few years of, one or two years of hiccups and fifteen, twenty years of effect, increased effectiveness and efficiency might be a thing we should consider.
Nothing got worse from increased attention, so. Okay, but everybody good on street maintenance then? Okay, and we will move on to contractual services. Ms. Cohen, you're up.
I said we shall put the beast to rest. I do believe I'm the last one, you have to go through the slides. Um, so on the screen, we thought it'd be best to go over our expenditure categories and what we're gonna talk about is contractual categories. We use these categories, they're summaries of our expenses. We use them because it's easier for tracking purposes and for financial reporting. But underneath each one of these, in the financial system, we actually have detailed line items. So most of these are self-explanatory, like personnel services, you would find in detail, you'd have labor, overtime, longevity, things like that. In capital outlay, you would find buildings and vehicles and equipment and that sort of thing. But contractual services are a little less obvious on what they're spent on, so we wanted to specifically go into that. So the basic definition is that they are obligations to other parties based on an agreement or a contract and they can be for goods or services. You will not find supplies, which are normally consumable, like office supplies, postage and inventory. But you will find agreements that are based upon a fixed financial obligation, such as banking fees, subscriptions and electrical services. So in our financial system, we do break everything out in detailed line items. And under the contractual line category, we actually have eighty line items to choose from. On the screen, you'll see the forty that we currently have in use for the general fund. A lot of these are pretty self-explanat, sorry. You can tell what they're used for by the description. So like jail services, vehicle replacement charges, subscriptions and annual audit. That all pretty much describes itself, what the expense is for. But we do have agreements that don't fall within those eighty line items. So we will place those under the bigger pieces of the pie up there, like contractual, maintenance contracts and special services. So I wanted to give just a few examples of what would actually go underneath those. So contractual services, we have, they're for special work-related type services. In finance, we have armored car services. In municipal court, they have court reporters for jury trials. In parks, they have the arboretum con, contract. And in different facilities, they have janitorial services. Maintenance contracts are for systems, so you'll find like the Google workspace, the phone systems and the security systems. And special services are the same as contractual, they're just one-time in nature. So you're gonna find election services, special studies such as comprehensive plan and the cost allocation study. And with that, I can answer any specific questions you might have.
Ms. Gamboa, go ahead.
Um, on the credit card fees, is that just, can you explain that?
Sure. The credit card fees are actually the fees that the city pays to be able to take the credit card, like for water utilities when we take the payments, we have merchant charges that we have to pay.
So that's the, that's what we're paying to a third-party service to do the ACH transaction between us and the consumer? Can we shop around services?
We actually do and right now we are, uh, with the state of Texas contract.
Okay.
And so we have a very good price with that.
Thank you.
Good, go ahead, Ms. Pearl.
On the credit card fee, do we charge the three percent?
No, we do not at this time.
Oh.
Maybe we should.
Why not?
It's something that we have looked at. Um, at this point, we are under a contract with the merchant services where we do not do that, so we get a discounted price for that. In looking at it, we would have to charge the customer. The, the difference between what we'd charge them and what we save doesn't really add up to charging the customer that amount. As more and more people come on, pay them with credit cards, it probably would look more advantageous to do that.
I always pay my credit card fee on everything and I just assumed it was normal, common practice that you charge the consumer for the, for them wanting to use that bank card. Otherwise, you know, I think we should really change the way maybe we collect to prefer a cash or debit or whatever. And if we are doing those, maybe we should, like Mr. Pearl said, consider charging them those fees for, cause you'd be surprised, once we start implementing those in my business, people would rather pay me cash or pay, give me a check than have to pay that fee. So I think once you start implementing some of those things, it evens out, hopefully.
Mr. Pearl, are you, are you good?
I'm through.
Okay.
I'm gonna have a heart attack.
We are, yep. Yep, go ahead, Mr. Conley.
If you could go back to that, I just wanted a quick question about the, um, so the workers' compensation at six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, is that, is that what we're paying for workers' compensation insurance or how, how does that, yes?
Yes, it is. Um, that is specifically for the insurance.
Is that right, um, like most things, as. Is that rate, like most things, has gotten more expensive? Has that, has that increased in recent years?
I'm going to let Bonnie take that one.
It has, as our on-the-job injuries have increased, then our workers' comp claims can increase. Yes.
Do you know how many, have an estimate of how much we went increased in recent years?
It did go down this year. The percentage, I do not know, but I will get you a trend.
Thank you.
I have one too.
Go ahead.
What are the special services and what are the inter-fund transfers?
The special services, there's a lot of different items underneath that. If you go back to that other slide, some, there's some examples up there of what they are, but they're normally one-time in nature, and they're contract services. So an example is a comprehensive plan when we had that special study done.
And is inter-fund one-time or is that reoccurring?
Inter-fund transfers are, they are movement of funds between our different funds. So we have internal service funds that actually service, like the general fund and the water fund. So we pay for those services through those inter-fund transfers.
Thank you so much.
I'm not really sure how that works. What are you talking about? It takes us money to take something out of the general fund and put it into developmental services or something like that?
No, it's for like fleet services, vehicle equipment replacement, the health fund. We all have to pay in order to have our health premiums. We have to pay that out of the general fund to the health fund. So it's payment for the services. It's like a pseudo.
It's health insurance.
Not all. So let me interject if I can. So we talked again about the sanitation fund, the utility fund, and the general fund. There is no payroll people, no bill payers, no finance department in sanitation or in the utilities. But they still process all of that information for them. And so basically, what that is, is the utility pays the general fund back for the services it uses of the general fund. So to be honest with you, that's what it is. It's the bookkeeping that's made up for sanitation to keep that fund solvent. They don't have any of the folks there to do the accounting and the finance for that, so they lean on the general fund, so they pay for the time that those people spend on their respective books. So it's really just moving between funds that are supposed to work together, but rather than have all the same finance, create a new finance department in the utility and the sanitation, we just reimburse them for their time in those services.
So it's a journal entry to reconcile the discrepancies?
It's a journal entry to move the funds from one fund to the other.
To pay for what they're, to pay for what they're doing for them.
She interrupted you, so it's still your turn.
You didn't ask if I was done earlier, so technically you interrupted me.
I think you, go ahead.
Basically, we're, we've got an apartment out there that does nothing but bookkeeping.
Yes.
That's what this is. It's not, you know, they just do everybody's bookwork.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Pertle, you good?
I'm through.
Okay, go ahead.
What's the difference between the enterprise lease charges and the vehicle replacement charges?
The vehicle replacement charges are for the actual ones that are purchased, and the enterprise lease is for the enterprise lease agreements.
So is it the difference between the ones that aren't covered under there, like the fire trucks and the garbage trucks? Or is that going to be, just, we haven't fully adopted the whole system yet?
That's for vehicles, so the vehicle replacement charges for vehicles that are not part of the enterprise fund. So this might be, might be a, what's that?
Police and fire.
Yeah, police and fire, like police vehicles. Because of the way that they're set up, we don't need to be trying to lease those, we need to purchase those. And so that would be part of those.
Okay, I was looking back at the previous slide, and it said fire trucks and garbage trucks wasn't part of it. But that's okay, but there's another replacement program that's just the police and fire. Okay.
Yeah.
That helps me out. Thank you.
Other questions on contractual services are on those slides for Ms. Cohen. Go ahead.
Can we go back to the pie? What is professional development travel? Is that what it says? Yeah.
That is for any kind of conferences that you might travel to. I go for my CPEs, for my CPA, in order to get my hours, my annual hours. And so that one's specifically for when you travel out of town. We have one that's non-travel, and we have one that's just in-house for webinars. So we can keep up with the difference.
And then what is Hill Services charges?
Which one?
Is that Hill or Fleet? Fleet, never mind. That's Fleet.
Yes, sir.
I'm going blind. Okay.
Me too.
Got to look up, not down. I'm through.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, because I'm still a little confused, so on the inter-fund transfers, so is this a fee we're paying for those transfers? Or is it simply that because there may not be an accounting department in every single department, that it's whatever discrepancies are in the books at the end of the year, are these physical journal entries to reconcile those expenses to those departments for what those would be? Or is it a payment that you're paying for this transfer?
It's a payment that goes to those funds. So like for the fleet service fund, you have payroll in that fund, you have the maintenance in that fund, and they service all of the different departments outside of that fund. So in order for them to run, we will, every month, send them a, it's a journal entry, and we will send that cash over there. That's determined through the budget process on what they feel those expenses will be for that budget year.
Okay, and can you give me some example of those, what those expenses typically are, like two or three of them?
Like in, like in the fleet fund, it would be maintenance and payroll and that type of thing. We do have an admin cost allocation that we transfer over into the general fund from all the other funds, and that's paying for payroll and HR and that type of thing.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Good. Go ahead, Ms. Pertle.
So each department, Roland, has a, has a budget for this? And that a budget ends up turning around and paying?
It's between funds, and so we try and keep things separated so we can show how the vehicle replacement fund is doing. And so people pay into that fund when Fleet gives them a vehicle to use. But Fleet doesn't just make money, they have to have an influx of money to be able to replace that vehicle when it's time to replace it. So the funds, whether it be our tax-supported funds, which are general funds, or whether it be our utility-supported funds, or whether it be, they will pay into that fleet fund. And because those are independent funds, government regulations require us to do that. It also helps, what I will tell you is, it also helps in the name of efficiencies in making sure that you're not putting the rate payers or the utilities at the expense of the taxpayers. So it's keeping those funds whole. And so they, that's how they do that. So it's really to funds, and each department has a certain amount that make up that aggregate.
That's what I was asking, that, and when they present their budget, they've got this included in their budget in each department.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Thank you.
Got it. I have a question. Yes, Ms. Moore.
So on the contractual, on the line item budget on here, where does the, it says forms contracted for right-ofways. What does that fit in the pie on here?
I'm sorry, which one?
Because we went from, it says forms contracted for right-ofways, and it looks like it probably was major thorough through right here on this line. And we went from $140,000 budgeted last year to this year to $230,000. And then when I looked at the department, it's in beautification.
Okay.
So, but I'm saying, what is it for?
That's right-ofway mowing.
Yeah, that's mowing, that's a mowing contract for the right-ofways.
So we're going into two, I mean, what's the difference?
We added some more cycles on the mowing contracts.
When you say cycles?
So, so we may, last year, we had four cycles. Where actually that contractor went out and mowed everything four times throughout the summer. Now, I think they increased that to five, so we have another mowing, or maybe it was six.
So they mow more often? Am I understanding that right?
Yeah, they mow more often, yes, more cycles, yes. That's probably confused, yeah, but is they're mowing more often? Yes, ma'am.
So, we talked about this, I think, the mowing and how we had an increase in some right-ofway areas to be mowed. Do we, have we always had that contracted? Do we have, can we not, do we have personnel that, would it be cost-effective to have somebody in-house that we did?
We found it more cost-effective to contract it than to have it in-house. They did it one time, and it was, it was like that personnel issue. It's kind of like making sure we have enough EMS workers. It was a challenge, and that way, when we get a contractor and he can get those people that he needs to make sure that job's handled.
There were some other things that happened during that time. Cities over, I believe it's 50,000. Tech Dot in the state used to fund mowing of state right-ofways. And everyone here knows we have just a ton of state right-ofways within our community, and we're extremely thankful for it, right? They do a great job on that. But the reality is, they picked up the phone one day in 2012 probably and said, "Okay, you guys are over 50,000, we're not mowing your town anymore." And so that's been a little bit of, that's when the big change happened. And so there was a move to contractual services because we couldn't afford the expansion in 2012, 2015. I'm looking at Laura because she was the one that was in charge of that. And so that's where the move towards contractual services went. And as the city has added more medians and beautifications, the workload of the people that use, those three or four people that used to do the mowing has been redirected towards the beautification efforts that we've done around town with the planners and the downtown. And so the mission shifted a little bit. One good thing about contractual services with that is we don't have to buy the equipment, maintain the equipment, as well as employ the additional people for just seasonal-type work.
How long have we had the current contractors? How long have we been using them?
We just rebid that out two years ago.
It was two years ago, I think, yeah.
But it is something that's always constantly looking at, maybe get competitive bids?
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Is there a set rebidding schedule? Three years or something?
Don't forget where, Mr. Crowley, are you done?
I'm finished, yes.
Yep, okay.
It's a good question, John.
I'm just following, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there a set rebidding schedule?
Yeah, historically, we do it for one year with four-year options, so they can go up to five. But if at the end of any one of those years, we find that they want to go up or some other change take place, then we can rebid it.
Thank you.
Good. Ms. Moore, so you're next.
So I'm just looking at the budget from last year and the budget from this year, and then I'm going to what is called litter contract. And then, so this is contractual, right? So on here, it says for the next year, well, the last year, it was $50,000. So the litter contract with five additional employees with finance, new dual cab truck or bus, $125,000 that we're budgeting for the next year.
Yes, but that's an increase in our contract with House of Disciples.
With House of Disciples?
House of Disciples handles our litter collection, so it's a contract with them. That's why it's in this contractual services. And then that was the agreement that we made with them. We need you to increase the amount of collections that you do, litter collections in our neighborhoods. And so that's why that price went up. But we wanted to give a little description of what was happening. They were going to have to purchase another vehicle and some more staff to do that.
So we're buying vehicles for somebody that would.
No, we're just trying to say they're going to be purchasing a vehicle. And so we're just letting you know that. That's part of that contract that we have with them, that they're going to do that.
I guess that's kind of confusing in what you're saying, because it's right here, it's $125,000, and it's labeled as budgeted for the vehicle.
No, it's, that's for the contract for litter collection, that line item is. They will be purchasing, House of Disciples will need to purchase another vehicle so that they can get some of their House of Disciples folks to actually go out and do the litter collection.
Could you explain us what House of Disciples is? Because I'm.
It's a charity in town that takes, and what they're trying to do is they take folks that are homeless and get them back, get their life organized and get them back out into the workforce. And this is a great way to do that. We bring them in, they do litter collection on the side of the road. As far as a contract with us, I think we started it about six years ago, something like that. I think Mayor Mack had brought that to us.
2017, we started it because we had, we originally had two part-time employees and a vehicle that we owned that we dedicated to picking up trash. And the moment, I was director of Public Works at the time, and Dwayne was working there, the last two employees that we had, which were difficult to get part-time employees, our pay was extremely low. We got two part-time employees, they drove seven tenths of a mile outside of the Public Works facility, pulled the truck over, and went to fighting one another. And so we realized that the area we had struggled with was litter protection, litter pickup. And so we tried to find a way that we could be more effective through different community partnerships. And the House of Disciples says, "Hey, we're trying to get these people back online and get their lives in order. If you will pay us, we can increase your litter pickup." And I think they've increased our efforts. And for repeated years, we have continued complaints that unfortunately, everyone looks as the city to be the responsible for cleaning up our city, as opposed to personal responsibility. But the reality is, that's been a demand and request from council in past years. So we're trying to expand those efforts to provide a more litter-free area for our community. So that is why that increase is there.
Yeah, but I guess my issue or concern is that we have a whole grant and funding thing for the beautification of Longview, and then we're budgeting $125,000 for the House of Disciples, when don't we have a program also for the beautification of Longview?
Ms. Hill is with the Keep Longview Beautiful, and she can tell you about what that effort's focused towards. I think they're related, but not exactly the same.
Keep Longview Beautiful is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). They try to educate about preventing littering and beautifying things and that sort. But Roland's right, we had to, with the homeless task force, this was one of the initiatives, is to try to get the homeless employed and give them a path back to stability. So House of Disciples has worked with us. The litter is more than one nonprofit can do with just volunteers. Now, they do citywide cleanups once a year. We work with sanitation on that. And we try to get volunteers doing stuff. John has a very robust adopt-a-part program. You know, so, but still, and Roland is right, we have a lot of litter bugs in our community. And they will call the city, they will call you. Mr. Pertle had a street adopted at one point, I think. So it's a never-ending battle because we have people that really do not care about Longview in that respect. Okay? The other part, just going back to what Roland said about when we used to pick up litter, we used to mow right-ofways, we had a real problem because that's very seasonal. So we would have these large people not having anything to do in the off-season when things weren't growing. So that's another reason we went to contractual for right-ofway mowing and a lot of our other mowing, because we don't have grass growing, say, for four months of the year. So that saved a lot on full-time employees.
Ms. Moore is good. Ms. Gamble, I see you next, and I see Mr. Crowley.
So I have a question about that. So is the reason that the beautification money is, because there are 501(c)(3), is that because it's grant-specific? And is House of Disciples a 501(c)(4), so they're action-based? So is that different funding? Can we use some of our grant money for this litter pickup?
We do not have any grant money for Keep Longview Beautiful. Keep Longview Beautiful does occasionally, if we get all of the competition right, we apply annually for the Governor's Community Achievement Award. And that is an award from Tech Dot through Keep Texas Beautiful to beautify entryways. But they are not grant-funded. They actually have to do all their own fundraising to do their programs. They do give grants, very small ones. But we do not have any grants coming in to support that initiative.
Okay, thank you. And my second question was just in regards to our contractual mowing, it was just about the mowing. So I know that when I've asked about this, we've also talked about like how the mowing people are supposed to pick up litter that's in the way as well, correct, while they're mowing? While they're mowing? I've seen, what I've been seeing a lot lately is they'll literally either go around it and leave that part unmowed, or they go through it and it creates more litter. So is there like some sort of memo process that we can have with people that we contract out, just to keep them accountable about? And I'm sure it's not all, but you know, just making sure these people that are mowing as well are not making a bigger mess or issue while they're benefiting from our contractual services. We're grateful for them, and I know a lot of the increased services, I actually requested increased service of House of Disciples in my district with the expansion of George Ritchie Road. It's gone a lot dirtier and the things of that nature. And I know I've increased mowing in my area, because when it was opened up, like particularly on Greystone, it creates a blind spot, so there's been a few accidents. But what can we do to make sure the people that are mowing are picking up the trash as well, so that it's not creating a double task for the litter pickup crew?
Well, the beautification crew, once they've mowed, will go out and check that. And so a lot of times, we'll catch them if they've done that and say, hey, you guys did not handle litter properly, and we'll force them to go back out there and take care of it. And of course, if anybody ever sees anything like that where they've done, if they'll report it into Public Works, we'll make sure we get that contractor back out there to get it taken care of. Because he needs to be making sure that litter's picked up.
Is it, so is it someone that we, third-party contract out, particularly on George Ritchie? Because this is where I see a lot of the issues, is on the new part of George Ritchie. They're literally just, like, they'll be, because you know people dump their trash, which they should not, please don't dump your trash, people, we beg you. But there are trash bags all over the road, and rather than at least picking it up, placing it in a truck, and mowing, they're literally running over it. I have videos on my phone, I will send them to you, of them just mowing them. And I just don't understand that.
I'll have a conversation with them about that. We'll make sure that improves.
Perfect. Good.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Colley.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, the House of Disciples contracts $125,000 annually?
What is what it's budgeted for this coming year?
That's what it's budgeted, the budget request is for.
So my question is, we have some, I mean, I just want to make sure, what's our checks and balances here with that? Because like you mentioned, seasonal with right-ofway mowing. And same thing with litter. We don't, you know, how are we evaluating if we're getting the job done, I guess? You know, with that substantial amount of money and making sure they, I appreciate the service and the track for stability and productivity, but I just want to make sure the conversations we're having, we're spending money, it's a lot of money. And so how do we know they're being, how do we evaluate that?
They've been a good partner. We actually do, we have a set area that they're supposed to pick up the litter, and we check those areas to make sure the litter's collected. If we get a call and says, there's a bunch of litter on the loop, we'll call them, and they send folks out right-ofway to get it taken care of. I mean, we monitor that very closely, because we're concerned with it. We want to make sure that litter gets picked up.
Can I ask a question on top of that? I know with Keep Longview Beautiful days, we actually measure that by like bags or trash collected. Could we not do the same thing as far as reporting? You know, this month, House of Disciples collected X pounds of trash that would, you know, how is that? Because I think a firm number would be helpful, and I know I've heard those comments in the community. So we've had a conversation about, can they not wear something identifying? Can we not, you know, because I'd love to see, hey, there's House of Disciples picking up litter, because that is a comment that, you know, I've heard before. How are we getting that reported back? So I think that's a great, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Well, I mean, I want to add to that, too, because I think maybe, and we may already do this, but like, making sure people are aware who to contact, you know, and who to contact to pick up. Because I know like my cul-de-sac, there's people that drop things, we got it, and now knowing, like, if people in the city know, hey, if you got a problem, we're paying people to pick this up for us.
Right, yeah. Reported at Public Works.
The set area that the House of Disciples do, is there a set area?
We've got set areas that we want them to run, and then we've got anytime we get a call.
Can we get a list of those set areas?
Sure. Yeah. I'll make sure to get that out.
I'd love to, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Are you, are you good? Okay, Ms. Moore, you're good? I think this one actually deserves a deep dive as well. I mean, obviously, we're going to, you know, look at it in the budget, but I think, you know, evaluating Keep Longview Beautiful, House of Disciples, because those are very, litter and aesthetics are very important to me. Beautification overall, I think, is very important. So I'd love to do another one of a deep dive on that, because I think those are all really good questions and comments we should explore further. So if that's an appetite for everybody, I think that's something that would be, I know we're just signing up work sessions, so, sorry, sorry, staff. But I think that would be a good one to have deeper discussion about as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. I think we are on to just straight discussion. So this is now the time for, if you have a follow-up parks question, or if somebody wants to make comment, I will identify and go orderly.
John, here he's looked at me in the eye. I just wanted to follow up about...
Can I take the one discussion comment first? I'm just impressed that all these people are being so patient.
I know, bless you. Thank you. Thank you.
How was it done?
Nobody's falling asleep? I don't see a lot of people, you know, zoning out on us, so thanks for your patience.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Ms. Campbell.
I know we talked about the resurface of the Spring Hill Playground and looking at more cost-effective ways of doing that versus what we used before. I just wanted to follow up on that.
So where we're actually at with that project, I actually did a park inspection tour with our operations and maintenance department yesterday, and went through all of our facilities to review, you know, where we're at and what we need to address. We have meetings this week about Spring Hill's Bond Project, which will be going out to bid hopefully soon. With that, we hope to close the playground at that same time while that construction's going on temporarily, so that we can go ahead and fix that surfacing. That will not be the long-term solution that we hoped for, but we are working on that long-term solution, which is a switch from the type of material that we used originally in that project. We're looking to make a switch eventually in coming years to a more long-term solution, so.
Can we make sure when we do that, that we have proper signage and that we have some sort of campaigning people know? I know last time we shut down the park, we did not, and there were lots of little kids getting stuck to the playground or getting injured. And so I would really like to make it obvious that it's closed, and then an indefinite sign saying approximately from this date to this date, so that people know how to plan their route and which parks to play in, because I want to make sure that people are safe while we're working on those awesome improvements.
Yes, ma'am. That was actually a point of our discussion yesterday, was that specific issue.
And then I know we talked about some of the equipment on that playground. Did you make sure, because I know some of the handles and stuff were falling off, and there were some exposed, rusted nails and such, so.
Yes, ma'am. That was part of our review, going through all of our facilities, was to find errors or issues like that that we could try and correct immediately, as well as look at those long-term issues that we needed to correct, too.
Thank you so much.
Perfect. Discussion on topics tonight, feelings, direction that we should be giving to staff, general comments. Mr. Newsted.
I'll just reiterate, I would like to see just as far as like the numbers, like, I know we got some rough numbers about the, meeting the option three for the increased pay by increasing the voter approval rate by the two cents per $100,000 valuation. And then what it would be if we just also added in the shortage for the road maintenance as well, not go to the full 3.69 that is approved, but we can do, but just what would that be? I mean, probably 2.1 cents, I don't know what that would be, but.
Is that something you'd like by email prior to Thursday, or to discuss and present Thursday?
I think we should share it with everybody in council before, so we have it before.
Sure, I think that would be easy enough, ma'am.
Yeah, like the hybrid option, so maybe deep diving more into options one and two, and seeing what different derivative options could come from those, or based on the conversations we've all had today. Because of course, we don't want to deplete our savings, but we want to come up with sensible, financially responsible solutions to a long-term fix without sacrificing the quality of our roads or the life of our constituents and our employees.
Sounds good.
And thank y'all for your hard work. Staff, we really appreciate y'all. You are awesome.
Thank you. Anybody else? Everybody comfortable with that? Kind of an email of, here's some general options, numbers. I think staff probably does need us to come back kind of on Thursday and give them more specific direction. That'll be our, you know, our budget adoption meeting is the, go ahead.
We really do, we're setting the public hearing on the tax rate, and so we really need to know, sorry, I've got this information to you as quickly as we had it, but we really do need to know what that tax rate is going to be set for the public hearings, so we can properly post it. Now, I think what we have in there at the current time and in the agenda is what I had proposed, which was the 5619. But I think if there's a general consensus that we can get to of if there's a desire to change that, or if there's that, I really think we need to do that, so we can make sure that's the budget that's reflected in our discussion next time, and so we can properly post it, so Angie and Angela, nobody gets in trouble over that. We got the right rate posted in advance of our...
You need to know that now, tomorrow, Thursday?
Before Thursday.
Go ahead, Ms. Colley.
So the difference in the increase in the tax rate, how does that affect our deficit budget?
So, if I can just say it, if, so John mentioned, Mr. Newsted mentioned the two cents plus the road. So if we're going to come up with $1.8 million, and I'm just using $1.87 million, and that's going to be, quick math, that would be an increase of, excuse me, roughly, that would be a 2.33 or 2.34 cent increase in the tax rate. So not going up to the 3.69, it would be 2.34 roughly. Would make it a balanced budget, with me still proposing to you guys that you do need to consider that one-time expenditure of the fire engine from the reserve of 1.4 million.
I just, I mean, I just want to make a note, I mean, I know we're trying to look at the best possibility here, and I just want to make sure that we're, I mean, the best possibility is going to have to be, obviously, we, you know, we've said a few times that, hey, we got 26 million fund balance, that every year we're going to take so much money. I guess the goal is to be balanced without having to have money in fund balance, and have that without increasing taxes. So, you know, I guess, I understand, you, I believe you guys have put a lot of preparation in this, but I think we do know we've got to tighten up in certain ways and find ways to do that. And I think we've had a lot of conversations about that tonight, that can happen, and continue to do that, but not just expect that we're always going to be $1 million or $2 million under, we're taking money out of the deficit budget every year, and having to increase taxes to make it happen. We've got to figure out how to work and make everything go, and with the tighter expenditures. So I think that's, I know that's the goal, because you've said it a few times, I mean, we, municipal governments and funding is something we, the revenue's outside of our control at some point, but the expenses aren't. And I think, just thinking, hey, we're always going to be a million-dollar budget, got to think past that in my opinion, and figure out what's, how do we make that not a standard? That's all I had to say, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Colley. Yep, perfect. I think that is what we're looking for. Okay. Any other comments? I mean, it sounds like the direction to me would be, we're asking Mr. McPhee to send us by email tomorrow, some kind of breakdown of options. Sounds to me that would include maybe a hybrid of those things, so this could come out of fund balance, this could be a proposed hybrid tax rate, but that you would really need to know for Thursday, because if we did include some sort of tax rate change, that would change your budget that we need to consider on Thursday. So you would really kind of at least need a general direction of that. So if you will send us that information, maybe tomorrow, each of us can check in with Roland, just to kind of feel our pulse on that, or check in with me, as we've talked about. Okay. Does that sound okay to everybody, overall? As a plan, I'll see your hand up. Go ahead.
Good. What would be your recommendation, ma'am? Like, based on what you've heard?
I honestly would like to take a night's sleep on it. This is three hours' worth of information. This is a lot. I think all of us probably need a minute to digest, and I think it would be perfectly fine for us to consider. But as I mentioned before, I think, I mean, that is the unfortunate position we find ourselves in. That's a hard decision, it's going to be unpopular, honestly, no matter what we decide to do there.